Good evening and welcome to the November 13th, 2025, meeting of the Laguna Beach School Board, Board of Education. The open session is called to order at 6:10. Thank you. Dr. Glass is unable to attend tonight's meeting due to a family emergency related to his mother's health. He and I talked about it before, and of course, I encouraged him to go back to Kentucky as soon as possible, as I'm sure any of you would do. Also, Clerk Hills is absent tonight, and I have a statement to read from him about his absence. They both don't want you to think that they're off partying or anything. They're legitimate. Now, where did I... so many pages here. Where did I put that one? Here it is. Board Member Hill says, "Having worked for nearly a year to advocate for development of agenda before the board tonight, I welcomed and was eager to participate in tonight's public meeting. The only possible circumstances that would keep me away have occurred. Later tonight, I will be admitted to undergo major surgery to address a medical condition, which doctors told me in August must be addressed in order to prevent the certainty of a life-threatening health crisis. I don't mind saying how very glad and grateful I am to inform the community that this is not due to any common or generally occurring medical condition. It is rather a procedure to correct a condition causing recurrence of damage to my left kidney sustained in 1979 while serving as a Peace Corps volunteer on a remote Pacific island without access to medical care. This surgery was pending earliest possible scheduling, and after two months of waiting, we were advised on November 7th that a cancellation enabled me to undergo treatment tonight. I still plan to attend the meeting before going to the hospital, but my doctor ordered me not to do so for medical reasons. In that light, then the only reason I'm not there is that I owe it to my family to follow their wishes given the doctor's orders. I hope and trust the meeting will be productive, and I look forward to attending the next meeting when tonight's discussion items will be on the agenda for action by the board." Both Dr. Glass and Clerk Hills wanted everyone to know that they definitely wanted the meeting to go on and not be canceled because they couldn't be here. And next, there have been some public comments opposing moving non-agenda items to the end of the meeting, and we are all listening. We appreciate that input. For this meeting and the December meeting, the agendas are very packed due to only having one November meeting, one December meeting. And in fact, today, we began at 4 o'clock to try to keep the ending time not so late in consideration of our staff and also the board being able to make thoughtful decisions. We all have very busy days, and by 10 o'clock tonight, we will have been in meetings for six hours. We want to be on our best for important upcoming decisions about insurance, the upcoming bids about the swimming pool, a possible school bond, and many other issues. There are other school districts that have public comment on non-agenda items at the end of the meeting. In fact, Dr. Glass's last two districts had public comment at the end. I know this is not what we've done before, and we really want to consider that. Coming in January, we will consider putting them back at the beginning. To kind of work on this, we are adding special meetings to our agenda for next year, so we won't have a problem. They'll already be on the agenda, and we can cancel them if we don't need them, but we'll already have them on the agenda if we need special meetings. That way, people can plan ahead, and we understand if some people can't be there, like tonight, Dr. Glass and Clerk Hills. All of us are trying really hard. Please don't blame us if we can't be at a meeting. I also spoke with our attorney, Mr. Danforth, about letting students go first because I wouldn't want them to have to wait till the end. So if there are any students that have public comment, they are welcome to come forward. No? Okay. Then... Okay, let's see. Ian, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Report on closed session versus denial of claim number 663270 versus Laguna Beach Unified School District on a motion by Board Member Kelly and seconded by Board Member Malchesky and a vote of four to zero with all members voting yes or the claim in its entirety authorized staff to provide written notice of the board's action to the claimant in accordance with government code 913. Also, on a motion from Board Member Kelly and seconded by myself are on Agenda Item 4C, trustees voted 3011 with three yes, one abstention, one absent to approve the stipulated expulsion of student number 202526, 42526. Okay. Now, reports, beginning with CSCE. Beep.
Good evening, President Perry and Board members. So we've had a very productive month filled with important activities, including our fall scholarship fundraiser and officer elections. I am pleased to share that our fundraiser was a success. We raised nearly $800 to support scholarships that we offer for classified staff members for senior graduates. They do not have to go to Laguna Beach High School. They can go to outside high schools as well, just as long as their parent or grandparent is a member of our union and classified staff. And that's one of our fun things that we really like to do. So far, we've identified seven seniors for this year who will be eligible for the scholarship. We also held our officer elections, and I was honored to have been reelected unanimously as president for another term. Bundy Kinder was also reelected as recording secretary, and we are really thrilled to welcome a new addition to our executive board, Deb Maia, the administrative assistant at the high school, will serve as our new communications officer. For the past three years, we've been fortunate to maintain a full executive cabinet, and I'm truly grateful for the ongoing dedication and the commitment by our members. I'd also like to take a little moment to reflect on who classified staff is and what it is we represent, because there's been a lot of discussion lately about the unions and often in a less than positive light, but it's essential to remember that the union represents the classified staff. And we like to think we are the backbone of the district, we're the employees who serve students, the organization, you guys, clients, every single day. Without this group, there'd be no students to serve and no districts to sustain. We are the ones who feed the students and ensure they have the nutrition they need to learn. We keep them safe and supervise their daily environment, support their learning through direct academic and emotional assistance, maintain facilities to ensure our classrooms and campuses are clean, safe, and functional, keep our technology running, enabling access to learning and innovation, care for students' health, providing first aid and compassion when they are sick or injured, supply schools with the materials and the resources necessary for instruction, guide strengths, guide students in their college and career planning, staff our libraries, creating safe and welcoming spaces where students can come during recess, lunch, and after-school, places where they can explore their interests, connect with caring adults, and find belonging through books and learning, and serve as registars as a first point of contact who welcome new families and connect them to our Laguna community. And even tonight, you wouldn't be able to have your meeting without classified staff. We're the ones who set up the room, run the IT so it can be livestreamed, prepare your dinners, snacks, assemble board packages so the meeting can run smoothly, and stay late into the night to make sure everything is done, only to get up the next morning and go right back to work serving students. So when we talk about the unions, these are the people we're talking about. They're the very individuals who show up every single day to lift up, teach, support the students we all serve. It is deeply concerning to us to see one of the proposals that would claw back a modest 3% salary increase while imposing healthcare cost increases of 400% to 600% on the very employees who keep our district running through no fault of their own or that of the union. And as a side note, as one member had mentioned, one board member mentioned, our members do choose the plans that they can afford based on the numbers and the information provided during open enrollment. They made thoughtful, responsible decisions for themselves and their families and now face unexpected financial strain because of changes they did not cause. So these are real human beings. They're our colleagues, our partners in education who deserve respect, stability, and fair compensation for the vital work they do every single day. I just want to thank them for all that they do. They're a great group of people to work with, as well as our teachers and admin, as well as, I always say, this is a great district to work for. But I just kind of wanted to do a reminder when we keep talking about the unions, the unions, that is the union. That's who we're talking about. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wickup.
Thank you. As we have two people missing from the diocese, I'm going to change up a little bit with what I was going to say. But I want to start on a very positive note. The Laguna Beach High School came alive with creativity and inspiration due to our annual Flow celebration. It's done in part with partnership of coast film and music festivals. It was an incredible week at the high school as well as this weekend downtown. We used two of our days of tutorial to actually have the students go to different areas and listen to different inspirational speeches from people from the community outside the community. I got to go to one. It was amazing to listen to and see the students so engaged in it. So I just want to thank Sarah Benson and Shelley O'Brien, who lead that charge up. There's a lot of other people involved, but they spent a lot of time putting that week together, and I think it came out flawlessly. And then I just wanted to tag on to the insurance issue a little bit as we're going to get a presentation and learn a little bit more. But we've heard a lot about the unions, the contract, but the insurance actually affects a lot more people than the people in the unions. It actually affects a lot of people at the district that aren't in the unions. It also affects retirees that have been given insurance, and I think there's even a few board members here that take the insurance from the district, which is perfectly fine. But the point is, is when we talk about this issue, it's not just a union issue. It's a district issue, and we should look at that as such, and we're looking forward to working with Minogue and Glass on getting our contract where it works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I too wanted to just thank the Coast Film Foundation for their partnership with the district and the Coast Film Festival Music Festival. It's rooted in our shared commitment to environmental stewardship. It's a part of the Flow Week, as Mr. Wickup said, and really highlights how education and the arts sustainability can come together to inspire creativity, take action, and make a deeper connection to our planet. We had speakers at the high school, middle school, elementary. Our students were over at the Festival of Arts for the Environmental Stewardship Day, the Flow Fair, the Flow Art Experience, as well as some students on the panel at the Rivian Theater. So it's really, really impactful for our students and such a benefit that we're able to have that partnership with them. And then I also just wanted to make note of this coming week, two other really exciting events. Tuesday, we'll have our Math Quest Family Night for elementary parents over at Top of the World at 5:00, as well as the high school will be doing their grand opening for their garden on Thursday afternoon. And so that'll be the... all four schools will now have a garden program. This one's being led by our student leaders to develop that. It's so exciting to do an opening of that this Thursday. Thank you.
Sounds great.
1:25 PM during tutorial.
The garden dedication is at 1:25? 1:35. Sorry.
Tutorial.
Mr.?
Is that 1... yeah, I think around 1:30.
Next, Mr. Ratchadury?
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, members of the board. So we are on our fifth month of the year, and one of the significant board approval that we'll be seeking next month is the first interim, which is our first interim budget approval, which comes by through October 30th, the first four months. We'll be able to get some numbers as to how we are doing compared to our budget. So this will be an opportunity to visit if we need to change course on any programs or any plans. That could be a good opportunity for the board to review and see where we stand on our fiscal matters. So that will be on the next month. On an exciting note, the pool project is going as scheduled. We had a couple of job walks done. The last job walk was today itself. The bid opening will be on December 11th at 2:00 in the district boardroom. So for folks who haven't seen a public bid, large construction public bid opening, you are invited to attend. We'll be able to tally up the individual packages. Remember, we have 20 packages in the project bid. We'll be able to tally up and quickly announce who's the low bid. That does not necessarily mean that this is the lowest response. We'll take our time to evaluate and go through the metric. If the bids may be low, but it has to be the responsive so they address all the needs on the requirement that was specified. So with that being said, we anticipate bringing the award, the 20 bid or less than that, in the January board meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen, do you have a report, either from the superintendent or yourself?
I do not have a report from Dr. Glass, but I do want to send our thoughts and well wishes to both Dr. Glass and his family, as well as Mr. Hills. We wish them both well. And then I want to wish everyone a relaxing upcoming fall break. Well-deserved time with family. So with the length of the meeting tonight, that'll be my report. Thank you.
Member Malchesky, are there any speaker cards for those wishing to... No, I guess they're not going to comment on this. Move to the developer fee reports. Mr. Ratchadury, are you going to talk to us about the developer fee reports?
Sure. So this afternoon, we'll have Ryan Zazda, who will be presenting the developer fees report, the reason as to why we do it, and what's our status. Ryan?
Thank you. Good evening, President Perry, members of the board, student board reps. This is the annual developer fee report brought to you for information. It shows the amount of developer fees collected over the past year and the intended purpose for what they'll be expended on. Some of the highlights in the report that I'd like to point out is that the current rate for developer fees has not been increased since 2001. Our current rate for residential development fee is $2.05 per square foot. That's for allowable livable space over 500 square feet. And then for commercial, we charge $0.33 per square foot. We collect about $150,000 a year in developer fees, and over the next three years, we forecast receiving approximately $500,000 in revenue. The developer fees, they must be used for new programs or growth, and our TK Kinder Mods at Top of the World and Almorel Elementary are just that, programs of growth. When looking at the needs of those spaces, we have a need to bring them up to current CDE standards for classrooms for size and en suite restrooms. If we look at the projected cost for those projects, the developer fees will not fully fund those projects, but they do cover some of the cost, and that is where we will put the developer fees to use. Again, this is an annual report for your information, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions by board members?
I have a couple, just real quick ones. Didn't we do a TK modification last year because we have TK in classrooms now?
We do have TK, a TK program, although we are using the classrooms that we have. We have not performed any modernization to the classrooms besides purchase of new furniture and some minor items.
What is the timeline that we have to complete reconstruction of these classrooms so that they're TK compliant?
There's not a defined timeline. We're not required, since I think we're a basic A district and we don't receive money. So it's something that we would prefer to do, to bring them up to CD standard, just to have classrooms that meet those space requirements, en suite restrooms, and just provide the best learning environment possible.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. That's essential. I've just been curious as far as how all that works. Okay. Is this money that we receive, is that in... Let's see. Should we be getting updates? The... where is the TK classrooms in the facilities master plan? What is the schedule for that?
They're in the TK master plan. They're shown right now in the design phase. The plans are about complete, and we're scheduled to submit to DSA over the next couple of months. So I would say at this point, it's within the next year, we'll have DSA-approved plans for our TK modernizations at both Top of the World and Almorel Elementary. At that point, it becomes a funding mechanism and a scheduling mechanism. So they are in the facility master plan. They're shown to be completed after the pool project. So that's something we'll probably address in the near future. And yeah, I don't think I want to go into details there, but there will be some opportunities looking out past the pool project to complete these projects. State funding is one possible funding source, that when that money comes in, that could be allocated and used for the TK Kinder Mods.
So funding that comes in that would be specific for TK or just general funding and we can use it how we want?
It would be under the board's discretion on where to replenish the accounts.
Great, thank you.
But that's one option that you could do.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Any other questions, word questions? Okay. Is there public comment? No public comment? Okay, let's move on then to the healthcare insurance update.
Good evening, Board President. So this evening, we are going to cover the health and welfare benefits issue that has been kind of related to you by the special audit that was done by Michael Bishop and Associates, and their questions as to how this prospectively and also retrospectively. So with that, I want to start by kind of generalizing or standardizing some terminology. It's usually in the world of governance and education. It's called health benefits. In our association documents, the collective bargaining, it's called fringe benefits. So it's a little different from health and welfare. I think we have talked to Mike, and we will go and standardize those inconsistencies across the CBAs and terms because under the government code, agencies or employers are required to provide health and welfare benefits to its employees. So those are some of the terms that we will use. And then as I go through the presentation, I will refer to some of the terminologies that we have been using incorrectly, and I'll try to address a couple of them. So as you know, this is just a recap. Between July and September, the district engaged an independent company, Michael Bishop and Associates, to review the disparity between what was charged to the employees and what was required to be charged, and figured out that over the past three years, the district actually made excess contribution. Then that's what required by the employer cap in our CBA. As mentioned earlier, it does not indicate that only the employees who are covered by CBA was impacted. It's all the employees in the district, whether they were covered by CBA or unrepresented and management. So the district contribution exceeded the CBA individual caps and limits on an individual level and also at a total level. And there were some identifiable gaps in our internal control as to how the rates, individual rates, are developed based on what's mentioned on the CBA and what the market rate is. And I'll address those on some of the subsequent slides. There are four recommendations. The first recommendation was to align the health beneficiary with the fiscal ear, and I'll touch extensively on our plan to address that inconsistency or alignment. There was a recommendation to enhance the communication between Business Services Division and Human Resource Division. Both play a key role on addressing the CBA and developing the employee rates. To simplify the health and welfare benefits caps and the plan structure, we'll go over the plan structure, the tier, and the category. And then also, a recommendation was to assess the staffing levels at Human Resources and Business Division and see if we need to address that. So those were the four pillars of the recommendation. And on my presentation, I'll address those from the district point as to how we address those recommendations or deficiencies, and if we need to. So before we jump on the recommendations, this is kind of a snapshot of what I have seen over my last one month as I studied the CBA and the health benefits. So I kind of categorize it in three distinct buckets. The first bucket was pre-2017. So that's the first column. You see, there was in the CBA a total health and welfare dollars budgeted for all district levels at the fund level. So all it said was, I have some of the old CBA physical hard copy. I looked at 2013, 14, 14, 15. It said that the district health benefits cap for the total number of employees is about 4.5 million, and it changed every year. So it kind of capped the total benefits dollars that the district is going to spend on behalf of the employees, irrespective of the number, count of employees, or the plan or categories. So this was a pre-2017 model, and then I believe after 2017, the district, what we call, moved to a category and a tier structure. So there's a standard across best practices that we have seen across school districts in California and also governmental agencies. The uniqueness in this district is we also have not only categories. And when I say categories, it means if you are just asking self-coverage, individual coverage, employ your spouse, employ your children, or employ your family, which is both spouse and kids. The two distinct categories we have is we have different individual caps for HMO and PPO. So those are the broad plans. HMO plan is a little different from a PPO plan. So between 2017 to 2020, I just took one year, for an example. I took 2019, 20, and I provided the numbers behind some of the categories and the plan just to look into, get to where we would be. For a PPO, the district said for an employee and spouse, we will pay... the district employer contribution will be $23,285 that we will pay on behalf of you if you are choosing employee and spouse category for a PPO. For a HMO, since the cost was less, we will pay up to $15,150. That individual numbers by category and tier changed every year between 2017 to 2020. That individual numbers by category and tier changed every year between 2017 and 2020. What you have on the exhibit is just a sample plan from 2019, 20. Then looking into 21, 22, and going forward up to present, I see that there was a change in the category payment. If you compare the category payment, it looks like the PPO category went down for an individual and also employee and spouse. And the HMO category, the individual employer payment went up. So it could be that the district or the plans are trying to drive employees into the HMO plan and kind of making it a little more attractive by offering more higher cap for an HMO as opposed to PPO. And I'll share the current count of the PPO and HMO that will give you a fair understanding as to how many folks in the districts who are taking benefits are on each category and each tier. So that's a significant remarkable change from PPO to HMO, and that's why I wanted to kind of segregate that in a different column. So those are the plans. The plan individual cap has not changed. Employer individual cap has not changed since 21, 22. And we all understand that the health bear benefit cost, right? That's the cost that we receive from Anthem, Blue Cross, Kaiser Permanente. They are indexed to several factors. The demand, the prescription medication cost, and also there are other research and development and other administrative costs. So those have usually, in California, particularly in Southern California, have gone up about four to five percent. In some years, they have gone up 20% in some years. Unfortunately, that district annual contribution has not changed. Over and above that, in September 2021, the district had an MOU with the Association of Certified Teachers and Certified Teachers and Certified Employees, where the board allocated $350,000. And I believe it was from the surplus from the COVID funding that the district had, although it did not specify where this funding is coming from, to address the higher cost of health benefits. The correct way to address that would have been to appropriate that amount to increase the individual health benefit caps, because that's the correct way it should have been done. Unfortunately, that was not done in this district. So although the board allocated the $350,000 in 21, 22, and it specifies it is only for 21, 22, one year, because it was a one-year surplus, that funding was never appropriated in the budget on an individual cap level. So I'll address that again in some of the slides. But to give you an overview as to where we are with respect to number of employees who take the four different plans that we have. In this district, we have two, and Blue Shield. Blue Shield HMO plan, one Kaiser HMO plan, and then one Blue Shield PPO plan. So those are the four columns that you see, the broad columns. And within each column, you see the blue bars are the ones that are employee only. The orange bars are employee plus spouse. And the gray color ones are the employee plus children, not the spouse. And then the yellow color or orange color would be the entire employee plus family. So if you look at this, it looks like the Blue Shield Trio HMO is the most popular plan. Out of 309 employees, 113 employees are selecting that particular plan, but in different tiers. And out of that plan, the family tier has the highest number of counts that we have, 51. Kaiser being the second one. And as you can see, the PPO plan, there are 46 folks that are taking the plan. That's less than about 15%, I will say, but it's still a material number, right? And true to as what we find out in medical healthcare needs, every family makes the decision based on what their needs are, what their family situation is, and how much they can afford. So these are the individual employer cap. This is not what employees are paying. How are the employee rates determined? So every year, we have the contract which says the employer will pay, if you are in Kaiser family plan, the employer will pay up to $13,000 or $12,000 for the Kaiser family plan. The variable is what the market rate is. What is Kaiser going to come and offer the district as to what the family rate will be for '26, '27? Or for this matter, '25, '26? That's the variable. And our fiscal year starts on July and goes through June. Most of the large individual providers, insurance company, they determine their rate around April or May. And there is a reason for that. They determine what the future rate is, because the largest buyer of medical insurance is Medicare. Federal government, their calendar starts October through September. So they try to align, the medical insurance company try to align or determine the rate, what Medicare is going to pay. So there is a negotiation going on. Based on that, then they determine what the rates would be for other large pools. So if we are to align our fiscal year with the health plan year, then we'll have to get the rates from the medical insurance provider as early as January or February, when they may not be ready. They may come out with a blended rate and they will say, hey, this is based on what we know now. So there is some risk to that, and I'll address that at a later point. So once we know the rate about in April or May, that this is what Kaiser or Blue Shield is going to charge for different tiers, different plans, HMO or PPO, it's easy for us. We know what is our employer cap for individual for Kaiser is. We know what the cost of Kaiser is for individual. We just subtract the cap from the rate and we determine how much the employee is going to pay on an individual level. And that document, I have provided a copy. You will see it on your desks. It is the Employee Benefits Guide that we have. It's published every year. It's what we call, we share with all the employees. This is distributed around July, August, and the open enrollment, healthcare open enrollment starts. So on this document, you will see one page here, and it's every year we come up with this document. Mike's team works with our broker, Baldwin Group, to come out with the rates that the insurance companies are going to charge. We made the mathematical calculation and we determine what the individual employee rates are. Based on, that's the equation, as I said, health and benefit, welfare rates, the market rates, let's subtract our cap. And that's how employee contribution is determined. So health and welfare rates come from our broker, sometimes directly from Kaiser. The health and welfare plans, rates, individual cap is, or maximum cap is determined by the contract. And this is just a derivative of the rates and the cap. Did that equation happen? Unfortunately, no. So that's why I said, like, when we publish this document, benefits rate, what should have been the correct rates the employee should have paid, did not match that equation. So this was, for the last three years that I've seen, this rate was lower than what it should have been. And that's where the error happened, and that's why we are in this difficult situation and having this conversation. So this chart kind of gives you, again, by the four plans, the total bar, the columns that you see should have been what the employee should have paid. So for example, if I look at the first column, the Kaiser single, as you can see, the blue bars, the employee should have paid $2,526 annually for subscribing to the Kaiser plan on an individual basis, if they are just asking for an individual coverage. What the solid part at the bottom is what the employee actually paid. So the employee paid $500, which equates to $50 a month, because it's deducted 10thly. So the employee paid $50 a month, whereas they should have paid $252.60 a month. So that's the excess contribution. What you see on the bar hashed portion is the district picked up for the last three years. And that was the finding of the assessment. And this in a nutshell shows you where it's not equally distributed. For some plans, example, the Blue Shield PPO, the employee paid a significant portion compared to what they should have been paid versus the Kaiser HMO employee plan. Question?
I just have a clarification question. So when you say, like, for the blue line, that dark blue line is what employees actually paid? And then if you go to the top, where the diagonal lines go, that's what they should have paid? But is that based on the rates that they should have been paying if that book was updated? Or does that also take into account, if the rates were updated, I mean? Or does it also take into account that the district contribution also didn't increase?
We kept the district because we have to be true to the CBA, collective bargaining. The district contribution stayed the same in 21, 22.
Because that's bargained?
That's bargained for. So we have to honor that. That's the static piece. The market rate fluctuates, so we take the difference between the market, what the market is charging versus what the district is going to pay. And the difference is what the individual should pay. And that's the difference that you are seeing.
Okay. But if we had realized that, and it was in the middle of a bargaining agreement, would it have been possible to go to, in any way, change the contribution of what the district was paying?
My understanding would be yes, and this is speculative, because had we shared in our benefits that this would have been the rate, I mean, now a person paying $50, if we have to go back and tell them to pay $252 per pay period for the 10thly, I think it's a burden on an employee. But legally, that's what we need to do, because if we have to honor the CBA versus what the market rate is, what it does, that's what it should be. Okay? Just from a mathematical calculation standpoint.
Can you repeat that? Can you repeat what you just said? I just want to make sure I heard it right.
So legally, if we go by what the market rate is, right? We cannot change the market rate, because these are negotiated rates between the broker and the insurance provider, sometimes between the insurance provider and directly with the district. Kaiser and the other rates come from the broker. We don't have control over that rate. Okay? So that rate is set by the market every year. Legally, we are obligated to pay up what the CBA says, that we should pay this much for an employee coverage for an HMO, for this tier. So if we go by that, then the numbers, figures you see on the top of this chart is what the employee should have paid for '25, '26. In '24, '25, it was different, because the market rate was different. This is just a sample of '25, '26. The employee, if I take one Blue Shield PPO family plan, they should have paid basically $13,790. That means $1,379 each pay period, 10thly. What they have paid is 8,000, if I can read that correctly, 8,000, $9,420. So they paid $9,42, whereas they should have paid $13,000, I mean, $1379. So that's what the difference is, and that's why we are coming back and showing you the excess contribution. So the hash area is the excess contribution per employee. If you multiply that by the number of count of employee in each category and each tier, that's the total excess contribution, and I'll share that figure with you for '25, '26 that we are anticipating. So the study that was done, went back three years and said that for the last three years, '23, '24, '24, '25, and '25, '26, the district is making excess contribution. I went back all the way to 2021. I was able to see the CBA and the market rates. So let's start from 2021, and I'll go over each year and show you what it is. This is, again, a complex graph. Although there is no cap, remember, after 2017, the district does not have a health and welfare benefits cap at a gross level, at a total level. Okay? That we forego in 2017. We had a total health and welfare benefits cap. We did not have a total health and welfare benefits cap. It's a calculated cap based on the individual caps and the number of counts or the counts of each HMO or a PPO category and each tier. So based on that, the district, the orange bars are the ones that what the district is paying. Okay? Should have paid, rather. So if you look at the orange bar for 2021, the district should have paid $4.68 million for employee health and welfare benefits. And the district actually spent less than that, 4.53 million. So this tells me that in that particular year, the employee bore more of the cost than what it should have been. So the calculation went the other way. So the employees paid about $150,000 more than what they should have paid. In 21, 22, the same thing happened. The district, by the number of count of each employee and their health benefit cap, should have paid 5.42 million, but it actually spent 5.19 million. And the employees bore the burden of $230,000 that they paid extra than what they should have been paid, if this calculation would have been correct. So it tells me that the calculation was incorrect since 2021. I've not gone further back, but that's the calculation. And this too kind of year was an eye-opener for me, and I said, okay, that's interesting, because it looks like we never were correct in determining the actual rates correctly. There's a green box on the top that refers to the $350,000 allocation that the district did in 21, 22, which was allocated but never appropriated. The only way it could have been appropriated would be to lower or increase the health benefits, individual cap, employer benefits, and reduce the employee cap. The trend started reversing in '22, '23. By the CBA, we should have paid, the district, I said, when we should have, the district should have paid $5.44 million, but in spend about $5.55 million, so an excess of $110,000. '23, '24, it spent an excess of $270,000. And it really spiked, because what's happening now here, if you can see from the graph, the market rates are going up. Your employer individual cap is not going up. So your employee should pay more, but they have not, based on this incorrect calculation. So it's a $550,000, that's a confirmed number, because we have closed our books for '24, '25. For '25, '26, it's a projected deficit that we will be spending about $840,000 more. One thing that happens throughout the school year is people change plans, because there are life events that happen. People have kids. People's spouses may lose coverage. Those are life events. And they can move from HMO to a PPO or from one tier to another tier based on certain life events. And those are codified in the health and government code as to what life events trigger the changes. And we have to accommodate. So that's in a nutshell that shows the overages and the underages, so excess contribution or over contribution. So if you just add the last now six years for this, if you add the two years where the district contributed less than what it should have, that adds about $380,000. Interestingly, in the first two years, '22, '23, and '23, '24, that adds to exactly $380,000 on the other side without factoring in the $350,000. So it's a wash between 2021, '23, '24. And one may challenge is once the year is over, there is no obligation for the employer to recoup the cost or the employee to recoup the cost because your CBA is a legal document. This is kind of a pseudo-legal document because the district is making this guide and asking the employees to enroll based on the information provided in the guide. So when I'm making a selection that I will select Blue Shield Trio HMO in August, around month of August, when the open enrollment happened, I am trusting that this information as an employee, from an employee perspective, that this is correct. So I am entering into a contract with the district. Hey, I am required to pay only this, what you stated on the employee guide. So that's a legal discussion. And I'll leave that whether, which takes priority. I know the contract is always the master legal document, but whether this can be construed as a legal document, and you will see into my presentation in slide, that it can be challenged and see what can happen. So '22, '24, it's a wash, $380,000, $380,000. Without that, $350,000 that was unallocated. And the district may said that it was an allocation made in '21, '22 just for that year. We did not do it, so it was not spent. So we'll take back that money. That can be a way I can see we go. It's the last two years. It's about $1.39 million that we are projecting that the district will be deficit spending, excess contribution than what it requires to. So now let's go to the recommendation and then I'll go to some of the options board has. So the first recommendation, remember, the study said align the fiscal year with the calendar year. In most of the districts that I've worked with and all the large districts in California and even outside California, they have this anomaly where your fiscal year does not match the health benefits year because you don't want to have specific rates from the insurance provider, which may not be the correct rates because the benchmark rate is the Medicare rates. So you don't want to go and negotiate with them before the Medicare rates are determined because we can be stung with higher rates. So based on the best practice, I kind of showed where our start of the fiscal. This is a complex chart where our healthy year and fiscal year. In the fiscal world, we all address this by budgeting our health plans into fiscal plans into two fiscal years. And this is an easy problem to address. And we have been addressing it and we will be addressing it. So I don't need think there is an immediate need to align and go back and align our healthy year to the fiscal year because fiscal year we cannot change. It's set in statute by California Constitution, July through June. Healthy year we can, but it's not advisable. So my recommendation is we'll stay with this two different years. The Communication Health and Business Services and Human Resources because Human Resources is publicizing those. Those rates are determined, were determined in the business office. And as I mentioned, it was determined incorrectly. So what we recommend going forward, and I had discussion in our executive cap, we will do several tiers of checks and balances. We will individually within the Business Services Department and within the Human Resource Division, we will determine the rates, reconcile if there are any differences. And then before we publish this benefits guide, Mike and myself or whoever is in this position is going to reconcile the rates and publish so that there is no error. Right? So that's where the error happened. We can address that with a business process change. Simplify health and welfare benefits caps and structure. I have seen that structure, what we call tier structure, in most of the school districts in California and even other employees, employee, employee plus family. Because otherwise, if you have a uniform rate for all, what ends up happening is the individual employees subsidize the family. Legally, the cost for family members are more. So this is a good structure. PPO, HMO, that's a plan. We have two different tiers. Some districts have it, some districts don't. They have only one structure. But I think it gives the option to the employees and provide some options. So we can live with it in Business Services and Human Resources as long as we can procedurally check the individual rates. So the fourth recommendation was assess the staffing level to see if we have enough staffing in Human Resources and Business Services. And I personally believe, talking to Mike, that we do have enough in both our Business Services where we, it's not a complicated calculation. It's a mathematical calculation. Right? It's a subtraction, and that's about it for eight different tiers and categories. Between myself and Mike's office, we can manage it. And we can, if we put in the checks and balances in place. So at this place, we are not recommending any addition to Business Services staffing or Human Resources staffing. So with that being said, I addressed the recommendations, what was on the audit. Now let's see what we can do. These are the four options. And this by no means are exhaustive. These are some of the options that I kind of developed on my own. We can have a permutation of 1, 2, 3, 4, a combination, or the board can direct us to evaluate some other option. The excess, as I mentioned, if you take the $1.39 million that was the excess contribution and assuming that you are allocating the $350,000 from that '21, '22 allocation that was never allocated, the net effect is 1.04 million, a million and 40,000. Again, the board has the discretion to allocate that unallocated $350,000 or they can say, forget about the $350,000 in '21, '22. It was never allocated. Let's forget it. Then your problem is 1.39 million cumulative. So the first recommendation is we do nothing because I think this, whatever way we go, it's a difficult decision for both you, board, and also for employees and for the community as such because I can see perspectives from different end, right? The district can absorb the 1.04 million in general fund. Do we have enough funding? No, but if you think of in a way, about 70% to 80% of our funding goes for employees, salaries and benefits. Right? So that is a significant component. And out of our 85, 86 million dollar budget, it's about 40, 45 million or more goes to the employee salaries and benefits. $1 million, it's more than 10% as such. No, more than 1% as such, sorry. But it's material. But what it does, it does not impact anyone. It does impact the district because the district is eating the cost in general fund and other funds because there is some component of that 1.04 million in nutrition services fund also. Not only general fund, Fund 1, but Fund 13 because there are classified employees in Fund 13 that they're paid. So we'll be splitting that cost, some in general fund, some in non-general fund. So preschool being one. Secondly, the district received a one-time allocation, what we call the Student Support and Professional Development Discretionary Block Grant from the state. The district, all districts received it. This district received about $680,000. This was not in the original adopted budget when the board adopted the budget in the month of June. So this funding came at a later date. It was on the 45-day revision that the board approved. But the funding has not been allocated for any expenditure. It's a discretionary fund. The funding usage is very discretionary. One of the usages is use it for student support, any professional development that we need and for loss of learning or for the increasing cost. So what the state has done, they realize that the cost of goods have increased and the COLA has not gone up to the level where the districts have been able to recover the cost. So they have allocated one-time cost discretionary that can be used for any purpose to increase cost. We can use that, appropriate that for absorbing some of the excess contribution. If we do that, our net cost, we are talking of $360,000. And the intent of this presentation is not to reduce the extent of the error, magnitude of the error. I don't want to say that we are trying to minimize the extent of the error. It's 1.77 million. You are bringing it down to 1.39, 1.04, and now $360,000. That intent is not this. The intent is to see how can we move forward and kind of close this error that we had unfortunately in this district. The third option is to renegotiate the salary increases for this year, '25, '26, to recoup the cost of $850,000 or if the board wants to go back and recoup the earlier excess contribution, which is difficult from an employee perspective when I showed the individual, how much an individual employee in each category will have to pay. The fourth is we can offset it with a future salary increases where we say, you know, we have made an overpayment of 1.04 million. We will try to recoup that cost over the future negotiation. So in other way, if the district was to give an 1% increase, right? So 1% for this district is roughly about $550,000. That if it was planning to provide that increase in '26, '27, let's not do that and let's use that fund to cover this excess contribution. And there are winners and losers in this because there are some folks that are ineligible for healthcare benefits because the hours they work, four hours or less, they do not benefit from that. Right? So you are kind of taking up their salary money to pay for the district errors in benefit calculation. So there are pluses and minuses on each side. And I understand it's a very difficult decision for the board to win, to provide direction. But that's where we are. That's the end of my presentation. I'm open to questions, clarifications.
I just want to clarify. We are not voting on this tonight, correct?
No, there is no vote on this.
We're just gathering information.
This is just information sharing. I want to kind of close the audit perspective, the audit recommendation. I addressed the audit recommendation. So that's something you don't have to vote yes for it because that's internal control, most of it. As to the excess contribution, how do we address it? That's open for discussion and we don't want a decision today.
Okay. We'll open it then for questions.
Okay. Board member Malchesky? So the first question is, this makes us whole, one of those four choices as of the end of this year. But then we are also then moving into the subsequent year where we would reconsider the rates and rates are going to go up dramatically, right? So isn't there something else we need to be doing moving forward?
That's correct, Dr. Malchesky. And I forgot to mention the last bullet on the option number four. We have to address the health and welfare negotiations starting '26, '27. But I want to honor the negotiation process. Let negotiation process handle this rather than us kind of directing which direction the employee, because that's a secret between the association and the district. And I want to honor that. We'll update the board if that's the direction we will come. Yes.
My second question, and then I'll move to other people for now. You've been here all of two seconds, so I don't want to put you on the spot. But are there any of these that, just given your expertise in this area, you would prioritize or rule out in terms of these four things? Or do you prefer not to?
No. I mean, that's the difficulty, I think, as board members. I'll leave that privilege with you. Right? So it's a difficult decision, no matter what, right?
Okay.
I think we have to listen to the community, listen to different perspectives. I'm sure you'll be receiving some emails or calls if you have already not received on the four options. And that something else might come up out of these four options. These are not discrete options as such. You can say, can we not combine a little bit of two, a little bit of three, a little bit of one, a little bit of two? So those are some of the options that we have.
Thank you. Other board member questions? Board member Morgan?
I have a few. Thank you so much for this presentation. I was not, I did not have a complete deck. So I was, and I never took, I didn't have the time to pull it up on the computer. So I appreciate another copy because it generated a few more questions. So it's interesting that, so, well, first of all, right? We have a fiduciary duty. I mean, that's, we have a duty to the citizens, the students, the taxpayers, the families. So it's really important that we do what we can to get this right on all sides, for our staff, for our community, because everybody's looking for a solution that benefits probably, you know, it's a biased perspective, fair enough. The two first years that we underpaid at $380,000, it seems that the obvious to me, and this is just my opinion, that the solution that was bargained was to pay $380,000 over the next two years, correct? So like you said, it's kind of a wash. So if they appropriated, if they allocated $350,000 but didn't distribute it, where is that?
So it was just an MOU. The correct way would have been to increase the employer cap. That way, it would have reduced the employer cap by $350,000 based on the number of counts. That was the only way it could have been done. And so the money didn't go anywhere. It was never budgeted for in the correct way, in the correct account string. So it ended up in the net ending fund balance.
So probably, and so it was in the general fund end?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. And so then that general fund end balance is the balance that is projected when the bargaining units go in to negotiate raises, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So, and then just to clarify, I just want to, oops, sorry. I just want to make sure. Mr. Collin, can you remind me of when we did the three-year negotiations at 5%, 6%, 5% salary increases as a bulk for all employees? What years were those?
It should have been, I think it was, I'll double check, '22, '23 to '24, '25?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So and in that time, we were able to reconcile the underpay for the first two years. But then we were $550,000 over on that third year. And you had made a comment that if it's in the past, it was negotiated, and it was bargained, it's done, we can't go back. So I'm happy to see that they reconciled that going forward. But how does that apply to '24, '25?
So this is, as I said, the calculation error is evident on this health benefits guide that we published since 2021, I have seen. So every year, the calculation has been a mistake. How it was done or what checks? How it was done or what checks and balances, I don't have the history. So with that being said, all the numbers are material numbers. $150,000 underpayment, $230,000 from an audit perspective, those are material numbers. It's not like $100 or $200 insignificant. So it just coincident that the '21, '22, '24, it's just a wash over a four-year period. And that's a hypothetical mathematical calculation. Can we do it over accumulated? Because each budget year is very distinct. You are budgeting for that year, you are going to spend in that year. Can we bring in the prior errors and net it? I mean, that judicial, I mean, that's something we can do or we cannot do. But since '24, '25, it looks like the healthcare market rate went up significantly and it was not addressed in the CBA level. And to be honest, I don't believe, talking to Mike, that this was ever brought up during the negotiation piece. And I'm, I'm not sure because I was not in part of that negotiation, that the employee will have to pay this much if we had, because this was discovered recently. My understanding is this current year, we discovered, or just later half of '24, '25, we discovered that this was an error and we went back.
Thank you. What, so the flow chart that you're proposing to go forward, where we receive the health and welfare, health and welfare rates, and then you've got HR and then business and then reconciliation. Where, so I have a couple of questions on that. First, what did it look like prior to what you're suggest, what you're proposing going forward? So what was the flow chart construction? Two, where does the insurance committee, that I understand you highlighted, has, has four members from La Buffalo, CSEA and management that will meet and discuss benefit options with a focus on limiting cost increase? So that, so that was the purpose of a committee that we have existing. So I'm just curious as to where the committee fits into the flow chart and where does the board fit into the flow chart?
That's a great question. So the Health and Welfare Committee is part of the negotiation, subpart of the negotiation. The first entry point as to where we define the benefits guide is when we receive the rates. That's the TAN area. That's the data we receive from the broker for the Blue Shield Plan, the Burnham, that's on the back of the side. Yeah, Burnham, or it used to be called Baldwin Group, I believe, earlier. So they provide us the benefit rates that Blue Shield is going to charge for PPO and HMO, the two HMO plans for different tiers, individual employee plus one, employee plus two, employee plus many. And then Kaiser also, Burnham discusses. So the discussion happens also at the CBA, C E B A, which is our Health Benefits JPA. They also negotiate in their large pool as to what the rates are. They're negotiating with insurance providers. There are some plan changes that they do, changing your co-pay, changing your deductible, annual deductible, changing some of the specialties in the plan. So that happens all before, before the orange box. So that's where the Health and Benefits Welfare Committee, I believe, Burnham comes to the, to the negotiation, presents the rates that they are seeing in the market. And then they work with the Health and Benefits Committee to make sure that the rates that they are offering, and they are looking at the market rates. At this point, they are not looking at what individuals are going to bear because that is not computed here. They are saying that Kaiser last year for employee was charging $12,000. This year will be $12,800. So the question I would anticipate is how can we bring it to $12,000 and close to what it was? Sometimes they can change plans, sometimes it's not possible. So once that is approved, then we get that TAN area Health and Welfare Benefits Rate. Those are the final rates from our two providers. Blue Shield for their two HMO plan, their PPO plan, and Kaiser for the HMO plan. So, so once we do that, then it's a mathematical calculation. What you see on the flow chart is a mathematical calculation. We have four resources individually computing that for each category, HMO, PPO for four tiers. We do that independently in Business Services and Human Resources. We reconcile within each division. H1 is the Human Resources, Human Resources Division. B1 is the Business. And then Mike and I are equivalent to our position, sits and reconciles at L2. So this is like a three-level check so that we don't make errors what we have done in the past. And we'll implement. So within the resources, we have the capability to do that mathematical calculation.
Right, but what, so then what is the committee, I'm sorry, what is the committee's role in that? And then where does the board come in?
So once we get that rate, then we share with the committee, right? And we, before we publish this, we share with the committee. And we can do that as the raw rates are coming in. We can get some early rates, right? So they will say, hey, we have got some indication of this rate from Blue Shield Trio. How does that look for an individual cap? We can run that number and get to the associations or whoever on the Health Benefits Committee is. And they can say, this is too overbearing for us. So we will request the board to increase our employer cap. And that's where mostly between Mike and myself will come to, with Dr. Glass, to appeal to the board that based on this rate, it is necessary for us, or we feel it necessary for us, to increase the Health Benefits Cap so that employees are not sharing the major burden of this increase. So that's where the board will get the first. And the board will say, we can increase by such and such amount. So the board has the authority to set the rates as on the contract.
So that's prior to the benefits guide? So all that would be done before that?
Yes, so this is an iteration process because benefit rates, they get refined from March, April, all the way through May, June.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I have others, but go ahead.
Thank you for the excellent report. I think the, my big concern is your recommendation as far as not to add a new staff person. The outside consultant that came in, I believe what he said was, most places have a dedicated staff person that does this. And I don't think, I think that's a model we should be looking at. I don't think it should be an add-on for someone in Mike's office and someone in your office. And I think that's one of the reasons why we got to this point. I think it's nice that you want to save resources, but I think you should really reassess that decision.
Yeah, and just, I kind of address that. At this point, this is honestly a simple calculation for, from a mathematical standpoint. Your market rate less the employer rate. It's not an additional burden. I mean, it took me literally, once I understand, you have to have an understanding of the contract and how it's computed. We can train the person. I mean, our budget analyst is pretty resourceful. He's doing complex calculation all throughout the year. And even talking to the Health Benefits Person, who actually, Ashley, who was doing this, this is not overly burdensome. It's multiple iterations. So once we create the template, it's just plugging in the numbers and it will automatically calculate on an Excel template what the employee benefits are. So we'll train, and if need be, we will revisit. If, say, for example, there is a demand, and I don't want to rule out, that's, I said, like, no staffing change plan. If the district wants to go from two tiers of HMO and PPO, it can go to multiple HMO tiers, HMO1, HMO2, PPO1, PPO2, multiple tiers, then it can be burdensome on the staff. But I don't think the marginal work that's involved right now warrants an additional staff from our end. And I spoke, and not only behalf of Business Services, but also Mike's team.
I've been in Ashley's office at the time it opens, and she's overwhelmed with this besides her own job. And we've had a nice conversation about that. And I agree with the outside consultant. I think there should be a staff person who takes on, maybe a shared staff person between your two offices.
And thank you. So just, just, I didn't want to say, this is happening before that open enrollment opens. So a lot of work goes on this because Ashley gets busy when the open enrollment starts because people are asking, I want to change plan, what's going to cost? So that's the busiest piece. And I don't want to go near her office or for that matter, whoever is handling open enrollment. But this calculation happens before that. So we may augment that portion of the staffing where during enrollment, we may augment additional hours or additional staff. But for the calculation piece, for the publication of this or to address the core deficiency in the error, we don't think, I don't personally think we need staffing at that level. But certainly, I respect what you said is Ashley becoming very busy doing open enrollment. And I'm sure all, all hands are on deck at that point of time. Thank you.
Can we finish board questions here? So I have a lot to say on discussion, but for questions, so the cap. I, I was under the assumption that a cap is the max you can pay. But you could pay under a cap. But that's not true?
The district cap that's on the contract, that does not cover the whole healthcare benefit cost.
Right, but what does, what does cap mean? Do you have to pay that exact amount? Can you pay less?
Okay. So there's a subtle difference between an employee cap and an employer cap. What's defined on the CBA are the employer cap. So Laguna Beach Unified will pay $10,000 for Kaiser's single plan. Kaiser's single plan is usually over $10,000. So all employees will avail of the total amount. It will never be less. So that's the cap. That's how it's written in the contract. So it's the employer cap. And a lot of folks think that the employee cap, employee cap is a derivative that's on this benefit guide. It's a calculation based on the market rate less the employer cap.
And then my understanding was that we had an agreement and the district went under the cap for few years, then the district went over the cap. Are there, are there legal consequences for that? Can we just forget that we had a cap and go under or over? Or how does that work?
That's a legal question. I think it will need some analysis and we can revert to legal counsel. And I'm sure we have a legal counselor here, but it will be very difficult. I don't want to put Mr. Danforth on the spot just by providing no context. And it will be, right? So he will have to analyze the CBA, the benefits guide, and kind of do the analysis. It will take some time to provide that legal counsel to you. Am I right, sir?
Okay, we're not putting you on the spot. And then, so if I understand what you said, there was, there were no years that were done correctly. Is that true?
Up to 2020.
There were too much, too little. So, so can you explain why it's so difficult to do that correctly?
I don't know, to be honest. I mean, it, it kind of, I was perplexed, to be honest, as to why this calculation was made in error, if at all. There could be other context, but all I can go by is the legal document, which is the contract, the benefits guide we have.
Yeah.
I mean, if there were certainly balance and checks, I think it could have been avoided, could have been done in error. There could have been some discussion that was not documented, if anything, but
Yeah.
I'll, I'll not be able to answer your question.
Okay, thanks for.
As to why.
Just concerning. Can we go to public? Okay, you have one more. I think Sherry has one more. I'd like to honor the union reps.
This is really fast. It's that when we went through the total overage of 1.03, I, can you restate how you got to that? The 380 at the beginning was a wash?
Right, so if you look at 2021, the district underpaid $150,000. If you add '21, '22, $230,000. If you add, so the district underpaid $380,000. '22, '23, the district overpaid $110,000. And '23, '24, $270,000. If you add this two years that we overpaid, it's $380,000. So if you take that $380,000 plus and the $380,000 minus, that's what I'm saying. It's a wash, complete wash. That does not factor the $350,000 additionally allocated. Can we do that? I think that's a legal question again, begin, as
Okay.
Board President asked, is each year is kind of distinct on its own, on its own budget and stuff. Then for '24, '25 and '25, '26, if you aggregate the two, one is actuals, one is predicted, '25, '26, because we'll not know the numbers till September of next year, what the actual cost for health benefit is till we close our books. As I said, because the counts change throughout the year, life events happen. So the two years is addition, 550 and 840 is about 1.39 million. 1.39 million, if you subtract the 350,000, that's the 1.04 million that I kind of indicated on the option level is, went one too far. The 1.04 million, that's the cumulative. Can we do that? I think it's a legal question. Can we address all five years? Or, because if you chunk it by just selective year, then it's more or less.
So just to tap in, just to extend that question. So the 1.04 is if you take into account the 350 that was?
Allocated but not appropriated.
But not appropriated. So assuming that you're taking that 350 into that consideration. But a budget doesn't work that way, correct?
No, no, and it's up to the board.
So if we have 350 that was allocated or, but not, that was appropriate, allocated but not appropriated?
Then that figure will be 1.39 million.
Of '21, '22.
Yes.
You don't roll that forward to '25, '26 because we didn't spend it four years ago, correct? Because it was spent somewhere.
That's correct, that's correct. It fell to the bottom line, general fund, other, other fund, I'll say also.
Right, okay. So, and then, and I just want to clarify, the bargaining, the CBA is based on the, on your flow chart. That happens before the benefits guide is printed. So all of these are negotiated and agreed upon and signed prior to the benefits because of the timing of when the, because the CSE, CSEA and La Buffalo contracts are signed over the summer. Or I think for CSEA, last couple of years, they've signed it on the, like, right around the first day of school because they, something about the picnic or something, I don't remember. But then, so that's all negotiated prior to choosing their benefits.
That should be the way, yes.
And it should be really close, but these aren't close. These are way off. Okay, thank you.
Okay, would you like to ask a question?
Yeah, so little confused on a couple of the things you said. Since I am on the insurance committee, we are never given the figures. So it's really hard to negotiate when you're not given the figures. And what you're given from the broker is a percentage. We just went to the CBA conference and luckily, that pool has had the lowest increases in the last five and a half years for the state of California. So we're lucky there. But we're given exactly what you said. It will be 7%, it'll be 10%. And we agree to that. There's no way that if we would have been given the numbers, the actual numbers for negotiations of your, people are gonna, we're gonna give you a 3% salary increase, but you're gonna have a 600% increase in healthcare, that we would have agreed to that. So how do we reconcile that? We start negotiations in the spring, the numbers don't come in until August, but yet we've already been given, here's the but yet we've already been given, here's the compensation, but yet it won't match then what the healthcare. How do we reconcile? Because for five and a half years, six years, the district cap has stayed static based on numbers we were given that we agreed to as a union. I mean, if we would have been given, the district's going to pay 5 million, total healthcare is 7 million, you're responsible for the other half. That gives us a complete picture to look at. Well, that's a 20% increase or it's a 5% increase. But that isn't how it works for us. So how do we go about fixing that part of it too? So that we are negotiating in good faith with correct numbers so that we can make correct assumptions and our members can make their decisions and not have this happen and come back on us when we negotiate it in good faith? I guess that's my question is how we fix that part.
So it's a complex question. The way, again, let's get, if you look at slide number nine, which I put up, this is a process that we need to get to, to get the actual numbers, what's reflected on the benefits guide before the negotiation ideally, right? Sometimes we get the increases Kaiser will say, or Blue Shield will say, we increased by 4%, 5%. It's easy for us to calculate that because we know the tier rates, we know the HMO PPO, we apply that 4%, 5%. We run through the numbers, we provide to you, not final, but close. And then you see the impact, what it does. Because if your CBA rates are static, your employee rates will go up if the market rate's going up. At that point of time, I think it's the negotiation piece that you have to get through and see that you can, and I'm not going to put myself on your shoes or the difficulty shoes. I think there is a way you can ask, right? How come we address the increase in the healthcare cap? And I think that's the process. Nick Mike will have to come back or someone from us, Dr. Glass, will have to come back and share that information with the board and say, hey, this is what we are seeing. We want to allocate some increase that the district is contemplating on the healthcare cap. That way it's not all on salaries, it's also on the health benefits. But I think you definitely need to get the rates. It doesn't, didn't happen. That's what I'm hearing because you were given a ballpark estimate of increase, but you were never given that figure. But that's what is the best practice in all the districts that we have seen is you need to know at an individual level, each employee needs to know that based on what plan category I have and what tier, what's my impact on an individual level? And it's not only association, it's all employees. I just don't want to kind of spring it on the association itself.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that a little bit. You know, when we're going into negotiations, we're giving, we're given, it's going to be a seven or an eight, 10% increase. And we, we trust in this when we get this. And then it goes from 200 to 100, 200 to a 600% increase when we're told it's, you know, this is what it is and this is why we pick our plans. So we definitely have to go through the negotiation process a little more opened eyed on both sides and making sure that we have real set numbers so that we don't have this happen again. That's our goal, of course. And I know that's the district's goal and the board's goal is not to have this happen again. And I think working together, we can make sure, but we just have to now make sure that we fix of the past. And from my understanding too, I know you only went back to what, 2019, 2020?
2020, 201.
It's my understanding from what I've been told, and I don't know this for a fact, but that if you go back another five years, that the unions or the employees paid more on those years as well. So I don't know how far we want to go back or whatever, if we just want to look at the years there and make sure that we're, we go wide open and, and fix the problem.
Yeah, I mean, just one response is 2017 and beyond, there is no impact because it was the district total health cap. And what board president said is the district can go over or under that health cap, right? Because it's just on the CBA that the district health cap. So, but when we are going with this employee guide, it's a pseudo legal document, I think. That's where there is some obligation, as you mentioned. So, yeah, I mean, I think this is what it is.
That's what we'd all like. Now, are there public comments?
I just have one more question. I, I don't know if I heard the answer or I didn't understand if you answered it or not. What did the flow chart look like before? Do we?
No, we don't know. So it looks like, because I did ask the budget administrator, I did go to the budget administrator and Ashley Cole, who is the human resource technician, they all received the rates from the prior CBO. That's what I was told.
So it would go from the receiving the rates to the benefit guide or receiving the rates into the bargaining and the benefits guide, right? So there's a whole section was missing.
So yeah, so the benefit broker would provide us with what the percent increase was going to be for each plan. That was then given to the business office and the rates were given to Ashley in my department in about July to prepare the, the benefit guide. So it was, it was just the percent for the total premiums were given to the business office. The rate, those employer, employee contribution rates were then calculated in around July and they were given to us in, in late July. And we, and we put them into the, into the employee, the benefit guide.
So the information always came in just based on percentages? It was never a number?
When we were through the insurance committee, it was always based on what, what they're anticipating, that the percent of the benefits to increase for that year, yes.
Okay, but we have a, we had a bargained agreement for a 5.5 cap. And that's been in place since 2021?
Yeah, so that unfortunately looks like, was not considered, looks like, I mean, this is speculation. That's why I'm thinking, why is there an error in such a calculation? So it did not factor into the, the contract rates, individual caps, looks like.
I appreciate having you here. I disagree with my fellow board member that we need more people just because another person recommended it. So far to me, I think you've demonstrated a very capable skill set to be able to handle this as well as your history with different organizations that were responsible for going in and looking at insurance premiums and budgets and things like that. So I am grateful that you're here. Thank you very much for this informative presentation. I appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Also, one last thing, suggesting staffing is getting into the weeds and we don't do that. So thank you.
We will keep reviewing it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, I'll call the first three for public comments. Did I just interrupt you? Oh, okay. Gary Kasich, Erin Berryman and Carol Nelson.
Good evening, everyone. And again, thank you for your service to the community, our kids, my grandchildren, who I hope someday will benefit from your efforts. Thank you, Superintendent, for the transparency of your presentation. Honestly, I was hoping to hear a little more why and how this happened. But I can draw my conclusions based on your go forward recommendations of what didn't work in the past. I appreciate your limitations with respect to employee confidentiality and in adherence to restrictions on severance agreements issued by the prior boards. Like to hit on a couple of points though. The CBA, which clearly was contemplated as a multi-year agreement, is a cap. And it's never going to foot exactly as was contemplated. And it is a cap. The language used is hard cap, a fixed amount. And it explicitly states that any costs that go over are the responsibility of the employees. So I think it's pretty clear that it was a cap. You, a cap isn't an estimate, it isn't an allocation, it's a ceiling. It's a limit, something that's not to be exceeded. You should always be under a cap. That said, the contract was administered properly in 2021 and 2022. It wasn't administered properly in the subsequent periods by increasing amounts that totaled, as was stated, just short of 1.8 million dollars. 1.8 million dollars is the amount resulting from not properly administering the contract. The graphics that you show on page six and nine generically demonstrate how it happened. I get that. It looks like it was an oversight or a lack of a check of balance between departments. Again, I understand the need for confidentiality. But if this communication or oversight wasn't in place for this issue, are there other issues that may have been impacted by the same discussion between the groups? It seems that compensation and other service contracts would flow the same way from the same organizations. I appreciate the analysis and I would encourage a confidential report to the board, not the public, so that we can avoid any of the issues with public disclosure that may result in legal issues. But I think more work needs to be done and I encourage you to do it and get to the bottom of what happened. Finally, 1.8 million dollars is a lot of money. We're a well-funded district, but don't simply say we have the funds to cover it and everything is okay. How many teachers, how many aides, how many programs could have got added for that amount of money? While the rank and file of our hardworking teachers benefited from this, it was not because of their actions. They were simply presented with a rate sheet and made their selections. It would be nearly impossible for any one of them to calculate the accurate, the correct rate, nor should anybody expect them to do so. The board will need a tough decision to decide what action needs to be taken, but I hope the board considers minimizing any impact to staff. Thank you.
Okay, you have to absolutely, each board member, you have to support staff. They already feel demoralized at the hands of utter disrespect, disrespected hands of certain board members. I know personally that school staff salaries are not really commensurate with all the time and effort and dedication that school staff members dedicate to our kids. It's really a hard job. You have to deal with parents like myself and we are a real pain. And my children are not always delightful, but it's a lot to deal with day to day. So to add on any more hardship would be so beyond the pale. And I just want to say before, basically, I just want to say every time I come up here, I am so grateful to be in the district because of this incredible LBUSD staff, from soup to nuts. Not a single one of you, not a single board member, for a single nanosecond should consider items three and four on this proposal. I know you were just giving out possibilities. These are items, three and four are not options. They are not options whatsoever. So not a single board member can consider for a nanosecond to take a single penny out of a single staff member's pocket. Not even a hay penny? Because, because that would be cruel and unusual punishment. And we are not about this in this district. We are about supporting staff because they support our kids. So you cannot vote for items three or four. Please read the online comments from staff. They, every single one wants you to choose option one. There is, this is not a decision whatsoever. It is clear that you cannot pick items three and four. You cannot take a single penny out of a single staff member's pocket. It's cruel and unusual punishment. Thank you.
President Perry, we're not making a decision tonight, correct?
Hi, my name's Carol Nelson. I was a teacher. I was a union president. I had been a parent, now I'm a grandparent of a kid here. And I negotiated for eons, so I have some familiarity with what confronts you. Not the specifics of this error, but of the concepts in general. And frankly, I'm here to speak about this clawback. I think it's short sighted. I have to choose between seeing you and seeing what I'm reading at this stage of my career. And I think it appears from the outside to represent some kind of strange commitment to vengeance over morale. You've got a monetary issue. But that's where your leadership should come in to find the money to rectify the solution. And I believe that, I really can't pronounce your name, I'm sorry, but the pronunc, I can't see your name, actually. The, there were some suggestions made that there were ways to find money in your budget. Because choosing to clawback from staff, not just teachers, from board members themselves, if they're getting insurance, from everyone that works from this district, to ask them from their pockets to make you whole from a staff error some years ago, makes no sense. And I think it's further damaging to an already damaged staff morale here. This issue belongs in negotiations. I hope that's where you'll address it. And I hope you'll be respectful of the people that work for you and the people that put you in office and not take this from your staff's pockets. Thanks.
Okay, Steve Brown, Steve McIntosh and Emma Lopez.
Hello. Tough, tough stuff in front of you. There's a lot of financial data flowing through the presentation, so I'll try to simplify some of it down. The analysis provided shows the district violated the collective bargaining agreement for each of the last four years, possibly longer. It also shows the years prior to those, there's a cap in there, I won't go into that. But be that as it may, it's painfully obvious that the district made benefits payments above what was agreed to and signed legal documents, and that creates a problem. In short, the district misappropriated taxpayer funds starting four years ago, and it's now risen exponentially each year to a whopping grand total of 1.77 million, as we know. For perspective, this amount is about the same cost as hiring 27 teachers or 44 aides. As that sinks in, let's talk about a few other financial ramifications of this because it's tough. Another big one is that it seems after 2021, the aggregate benefits cost cap was removed. You have to ask yourselves, who did that? Who approved it and where is it documented? This move not only exposes the district and taxpayers to greater financial risk as well as the educators themselves, but it is well outside industry norms for the way benefits are set at thousands of companies and public entities throughout the country. Simply put, depending on what each staff member does with their benefit selections each year, the mix changes alone could lead to an even bigger swings in financial exposure for the district that hasn't even been contemplated in anything yet. Finally, as my time is almost up, I'll end with this. I spent decades working in the banking industry and saw firsthand how quickly things can get ugly when bad things happen. I bring this up because in 2008, everyone in the country became aware of just how bad things can get when we almost slid into the great, another great depression. It was driven in part by investment banks that didn't do proper underwriting risk analysis and flooded the market with securities backed by sketchy assets. When something like that happens, the government puts the financial fire out first and then very quickly begins to crack down. This is exactly what happened and the result was a lot of unambiguous and onerous regulatory changes. Today, it also means investment bankers hired to assist a school district in financing a bond have a much higher risk analysis and disclosure burden to overcome. If they don't do it right, they will face massive fines and really nasty civil and other penalties. Make no mistake that this benefits problem is a material financial issue, reflects weaknesses in financial controls over multiple reporting periods and results in a whole bunch of other bad things. It will certainly be disclosed to investment banking firms, regulators and auditors, so we need to get this problem cleaned up from top to bottom as thoroughly and quickly as possible. It is crucial right now that all steps be taken to correct the district books and records, properly report findings to the public and to regulatory agencies, and to review document and lighten up, and tighten up financial controls, for example. Further, if you haven't done so already, as a board with such knowledge and fiduciary oversight, you now have zero choice but to have your legal group reach out to law enforcement authorities to be sure you are properly protecting the interests of the district and all of its employees. These are just some of the financial issues and exposures that this 1.77 million benefits problem has created beyond the headline number. Action must be taken to protect the district, staff, taxpayers, and most especially programs supporting the kids.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Manoj, thank you for the presentation, much appreciated. Minoj, thank you for the presentation, much appreciated. I don't think anybody in the room is blaming the rank and file, union, non-union, whatever people here. They're basically innocent bystanders of a situation that is way out of hand. Taking now to the final budget, 2324 states, the district contributes a fixed amount for health and welfare benefits for its employees. As a, as a, as part of the agreement with both unions, any increase in health and welfare costs will be passed on to employees. The committee had agreed to have the increases applied directly to the specific plan versus spreading the increase equally for all insured. So I assume that's the insurance committee, which union leadership is on, administration was on. And then that brings up another committee. The Joint Fiscal Management Committee says here the purpose was in order to facilitate negotiations and as part of the negotiating process. Also on that, that committee are the union presidents, superintendent, assistant superintendent of business services, and a governing board member. And then lastly, the bargaining unit, which is all part of this trifecta of sorts. So it's just unfathomable that you wouldn't ask for the numbers, ask the people that you're sitting with on three different entities to find out exactly what you needed to find out. I mean, that, that just, there's a lot more people know a lot more than they're saying here. So approval of overpayments. Some are saying these spins were approved. All of the approvals in the budgets, et cetera, were done with incomplete reports, both verbal and written, with omission of material information and fact. This allowed $1,770,000 of taxpayer money to be misappropriated. Had the two board members not been elected this past November, last November, a year ago, this would still be going on, folks. There's no doubt in my mind, and I think everybody knows that to be the case. So it's time to take a closer look at this and make sure that everything has been vetted, because taxpayers are demanding it. And again, this is not about the rank and file, and they're the ones that are getting screwed over here by the people that are running, had run the district. So we have the right team in place, let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emma Lopez, Kimberly Smith, and Eva Pauling.
Good evening, members of the board, students, staff, and the public. I'm here on behalf of Porter James Hughes, who is the Labor Relations Representative for the California School Employees Association, Chapter 131. I'm the Senior Labor Relations Representative at the field office. I'm reading this on his behalf, because he unfortunately was not able to be here at the last minute. So CSEA has negotiated in good faith with the district regarding health and welfare, including health and welfare, and will continue to do so. The district's payments of contributions to health benefits are not made directly to our members. The district makes these payments to the insurance companies. At no time has CSEA or its members received any kind of additional payment from the district due to this issue. CSEA only became aware of this issue when the district raised it publicly this past summer, so we found out when you found out. We are, look forward to and are committed to working with the district to resolve any concerns, and we look forward to continuing to work and utilize our positive labor management relationship to resolve this.
Good evening. Thank you for such a wonderful report. My name is Kimberly Smith. As you consider to address the $1 million in excess healthcare contributions, I want to urge you to support option one or option two. Mistakes happen in every organization. What defines effective leadership is not the lack of mistakes, but how you respond to it, as evident this evening. I say that as someone who has led an organization through complex financial operations. When I stepped in as a new CEO, I discovered years of legacy oversights. And while identifying these issues was necessary, I also learned that going down the path of a witch hunt, which is suggested by a very small subset of this community, served no one. Trying to assign blame to former leadership did no good. It cost time, money, and morale, and it ultimately distracted from the work of fixing the problem and rebuilding the trust. The same lesson applies here. The overpayment was not caused by teachers or staff here, and to clawback salary increases or future compensation would punish the very people who show up day in and day out for our students. If we want to attract and retain the best and brightest educators, stability and respect matter more than squeezing them for a mistake they did not make. We need transparency and accountability, but we also need discipline. I would ask the board to disclose for the record how much money has been spent on legal fees since this new board took office. Because if we're truly concerned about fiscal responsibility, then we should be equally concerned about the significant legal costs that district, excuse me, that this district has incurred under the current leadership. The overpayments of benefits was a failure, yes, but it is not the existential threat to the district that some are making it out to be. The real risk now is continued mismanagement, burning through public funds on endless legal consultations and investigations that will never fully answer the why, while neglecting to focus on how we move forward. Strong leadership is about course correction, not retribution. It's about fixing what's broken, restoring trust, and ensuring the organization moves forward stronger than before. Supporting option number one or number two doesn't exactly do that. Please consider.
Hi, Eva Pauling. I'm parent of two here in the district. I had a whole long thing written out, but after listening to the presentation and, you know, really understanding some of these numbers, the thing that we're not addressing is that the majority of teachers are picking the most inexpensive healthcare plan, period. It's not the best. There's nothing good about, I'm not going to say that. It's maybe a perfectly fine plan, but it's not the best one on here, and they're picking it because it is the cheapest. This 1.87, 1.0, 1.4 million dollar number that we're talking about is the excess of how much those premiums have now cost. What we're not addressing is the fact that these caps have simply been too low for too long. Minoj brought that up. I'm sorry, I wish I could pronounce her last name as well, but I'm just going to go with Minoj. He had fantastic presentation, and that we should have been increasing these caps every single year. So the district should have been paying a portion of this increase every single year. Normal companies would provide 80, 90% coverage for those that are generous. Our teachers are the lifeline to this school district. It is why people move into this community. It is why we send our kids to these schools. They should not be overburdened. There is a correction that needs to get made. The district did gravely make a mistake here. This is years upon years of mistakes. The board should have asked more questions. There is a lot of accountability to go around here, but to put this at the feet of the teachers in any capacity, and to not look at what we should have been doing along the way in increasing our own caps and why we have them set up the way that we do, is the error. We have to get this right, and we cannot increase these premiums to even close to the rates that are listed here. We, as a district, have to absorb this. We can and we should with our funds. Thank you.
Madam President, can I address one comment about the insurance fees? I want to remind people about our insurance fees, that we were six months without a superintendent, so we needed a lot of legal support. We have a new superintendent that is not from California, and California school, California ed code is very different than a lot of other states, and so there's been a lot of reference there. And I also want to remind people, every time there's a PRA requested, they have to go through legal, unless it's very simple, to make sure that there's no issues with it. And that also drives up the cost. So when we're starting to be concerned about our legal costs, please keep in mind that PRA requests do contribute to that. So just something to keep in mind. Thanks.
Thank you. And did anyone else have anything to say as far as discussion? Well, I'll just say, I, I certainly don't think any teachers or staff had anything to do with this, and I would never want to clawback money from them. I'm glad that they're, it looks like we have funds that we can cover this, and I, I doubt any of my other fellow board members want to take money back. We just want to figure out how to make it go forward well, but we also have concerns about how this happened and making sure it doesn't happen again. Okay, we will move on then to governance. Board member reports. We still have a full agenda tonight. It's after nine. Please, everybody, keep to three minutes. Let me start.
Shall we time anything?
Oh, that clock's wrong. It's only 8:10. Feels like 9:10. Let's start with Logan.
So for the first part of our report, I just wanted to thank Keon for stepping in and joining in the absence of Ivy. We're all very appreciative that he's here, and I'm appreciative to have him on the dais with me. Unfortunately for this report, we, I, there is something that I feel needs to be addressed from the side of the students, and it is not only the, the students have a very good appreciation of what our staff does and what our teachers do for us on our campus. And many students have come to me and expressed their concern to me about how the new public comment system, although it does allow students to speak at the beginning of the meeting, it doesn't allow staff. And I personally think that it should include staff as well, and many students have come up to me saying the same thing, because it's not only students who are having to go back to school the same day, or the next day after a board meeting. Staff members have to as well, and they are getting there before students, and they're staying at the board meetings now longer to have to get their points across. And I think it's unfair that students and staff are being looked at in this, these two different roles. I think they should be moved together to both have the option to speak before the rest of the community at public comments if, I know you said that they might be, we might be going back to public comments at the beginning in January, but if we continue to do them at the end, I think, and the students think, that staff as well as students should have the opportunity to speak their minds in front of the community at the top of the meeting. So with that, I want to put back on a lighter note and pass it over to Keon.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for being here. And I believe that, you know, it's a privilege for, not only for me to be here, but to represent the entire Laguna Beach Unified School District Committee as a student. I just want to echo everything that Logan said. I believe, I agree with everything he said, you know, he comes from a very, I think, fair viewpoint, in which that, along with students, staff should be able to speak at the beginning of these meetings, as our staff is just important, just as important, and if not, more important than our students. You know, they're the ones that keep this whole district together, and they have so much meaning to all the parents and the students. So, yeah, when public comment falls at the very end and unintentionally filters out the very people in community that we want to hear from the most, and I believe that that needs to be addressed going forward, and, yeah, hopefully that can be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Dr. Malczewski.
So I'm also going to say a few things about the board meetings. I want to say also that I do not think it's a good idea to move public comments to the end of the meeting when it's too late for students and staff to participate, as well as parents who have young children and lives outside of the school board and are here because they want to civically engage with our meetings. And let's be honest, we have a board that the community has complained a lot about, the union has no confidence in, and there are community concerns in the past couple of weeks about governance issues, including an ad that Mr. Hill's placed in the Indy in recent PRA disclosures. So it feels, the perception is, that what we're trying to do is silence community members in a time when we have real governance issues that need to be addressed. So a busy meeting is not a reason to make people wait to comment until the end of the meeting and make it much harder for the public to hear those comments and engage. On a related note, I want to thank President Perry for canceling the November 3 bylaw meeting after a community uproar. A primary concern for me before I make my full comments is about our meetings, which run more than five hours at a time, and last-minute requests for special meetings. In general, that kind of practice does not give much thought to the financial cost or the extensive staff effort to manage our meetings. But I also need to clear the record on the bylaw meetings. It is true that the board majority has been talking since last March, and before that, honestly, about the need for a special meeting to discuss board bylaws. It is not true that two members of the board have not made themselves available for a special meeting. The board majority wanted to wait for the new superintendent to address bylaw changes, and Mr. Hill's talked on the dais about the need to change the balance of power between the district and the board even before bylaws were brought for revision, and said there would be a day of reckoning when Dr. Glass arrived in June. So it wasn't until August 14th, there were cell phone discussions, Carter McKenzie brought forth a bylaw change, but three bylaws were agendized on August 14th. I made a motion to postpone that discussion because it was summer and teachers and parents weren't available. I also shared my concerns, including with President Perry when we had lunch to discuss a range of issues, that proposing significant changes to bylaws one at a time potentially obscured the full impact of bylaw changes on the board and district governance, and I thought we should have a bylaws meeting. But the board majority proceeded to select specific bylaws for revision and agendize them in groups at regularly scheduled board meetings, until October 24th, when more bylaws were agendized and Mrs. Morgan made a motion to postpone discussion for a special meeting. I was delighted, because that's what I thought should happen all the time. And I gave dates on the dais that I was available, and it did not include November because of a travel schedule and for work and the holidays. So we then had a November meeting announced that neither Jim nor I could make, and I'm delighted it didn't happen. But it's worth pointing out that I've, I've attended 11 special meetings since January. I always make myself available as long as I have adequate notice, and meetings don't conflict with the, conflict with my requirements that I prioritize my own students and my prior work commitments. There was one meeting I missed. That was on March 5th, but the board did not tell me that that meeting was going to happen. I got the announcement with the rest of the community, and I wasn't able to make that board meeting. But again, there was no effort to schedule bylaws meetings that the board minority members declined to participate in. And I just want to add one additional concern. Special meetings have always been determined through Victoria Weber or the superintendent. The reason you do that is because it prevents Brown Act violations. If only one person is collecting the dates, then you know that board members aren't speaking to each other about what dates are possible. So I get meeting times announced sometimes before I've been asked about availability, which creates the perception of a Brown Act violation, because dates and topics are selected and then brought for approval, but there hasn't been a selection process that I can see in terms of dates that are going through Victoria. It makes me curious about how we get a date that three board members can pick and be at, but the two minority board members can't. And that date has never been shared with me. So of course, I'm not making any accusations. I wouldn't do such a thing, but I urge the superintendent and I urge President Perry to be mindful of the issue going forward, so that all of our board discussions are going through LBUSD email and through Ms. Weber and through the superintendent. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Kelly.
No, she wants, we're going to go along this way. Go ahead. I attended two events for the district. One was the PTA for the high school, which we, the board does not have a representative, but I have been asked always by the high school PTA members if I would come and give my thoughts on what's going on with the, the board and do a summary. And then the other was the council, the PTA council, which I am the alternate for, and the Joan was out of state, and so I did represent that. To my, to my astonishment, Mrs. Morgan was at the high school PTA meeting. I thought she was banned from it because of her behavior at the last meeting of the school year last year, when I thought she swore at some of the members of the PTA. So I was also amazed when she was sitting there filming me as far as during the, my presentation. So I thought I'd give you my presentation during my time, so that she has So I thought I'd give you my presentation during my timed so that she has it on tape and I can give it to you all as far as the way that I remember it. The first thing is, I pointed out that I thought that Fuel gave the best summary that there is concerning what goes on at the board. It's balanced. They have people that are in the room and I encourage people to look at that summary. I talked about as far as what the items were on the agenda. Restorative discipline was the, took up most of the time. Mrs. Morgan had about 20 questions that she had got from AI, which kept overlapping and kept us here forever and ever. The superintendent gave talks on his 100-day report, which I thought was just excellent. But I thought that the most important part was when it was my turn, I turned it over to the students and the students did the best job possible as far as turning to trust and, and issues in that area. The bylaws were removed by Mrs. Morgan, which I was grateful for. And that's the summary of what went on. And then I have what my take was. And my take was that the board is still trying to find its way, that Mrs. Perry is getting much better in her role as president. I'm grateful for that. Hills and Morgan are still very disruptive. That Hills, Hills' full-page ad I thought was just inappropriate as far as for trying to have unity of purpose, which is one of the key items of being a board member. And the last thing I talked about was the pool was on schedule and I was really grateful for that. I'm sorry we didn't start in March as far as we'd be even further along, but I'm concerned that Mr. Hills and Mrs. Morgan are looking at ways as far as preventing that or adding other things on to it. And I gave the example of the newspaper article that Mr. Hills had talked about the pool in it, that it wasn't, it wasn't taken into consideration what the community needs were concerning children and old people. But again, it's, I believe that we are and I believe that we have done everything possible. And I've talked with members of the city council. They don't want us to go back and negotiate with them at all. They're really grateful that we're going forward. They don't have the money to do a pool. And so, and Mrs. Morgan, every time the budget comes up, she's always going on about how does the, the pool is going to affect future projects in the future. And I said, you just need to continue watching that. And that was my report that I gave to both groups. I don't know if you want to, you're next, so you can do whatever you want. Thank you.
Thank you.
My turn. Thank you so much. So I am sending out positive thoughts to Dr. Glass and his family and as well as Howard Hills, sending positive healing thoughts and steady hands that are being sent his way. I'd like to welcome Keon. I'm sorry that we didn't have the opportunity to introduce you before, but thank you for stepping in and being the alternate tonight. I appreciate that. I want to, before I get into my report, because now I'm going to have, address a couple of things that were said, just for clarifications, with the request for the, when I pulled, when I made the motion to pull the policies, it was in, as an awareness of the length of the meeting and the fact that these policies deserved our concentrated attention. To Victoria's credit and to disagree with Member Malchesky, we all received an email, "How about December 8th?" I know my response was, "I cannot commit at this time." Because my daughter's finishing college and I don't know what that looks like as far as when I need to be there and when I need to pick her up. So I asked if there was any other dates because I found it very unusual and very disheartening to see that we weren't putting our job as a board member as a priority and trying to find a date that was sooner than seven weeks from the last meeting. So I don't know where this conspiratorial theory is coming from because I know Victoria did her job. She sent me a request. I said I wasn't available, other than commented that hopefully we can find something sooner. And then I got the date of November 3rd. So thank you, Victoria, for doing your job. I'm sorry if it's being questioned. As far as Dr., thank you, Kelly's comment, I will address that later in my report because I did include something in it in my report, so thank you for bringing it up. The transportation, so since the last meeting, we have had a transportation committee. We came together to continue responding to the concerns and complaints of the school community regarding our transportation services. The committee continues to do the work of providing safe and prompt transportation to all of our students so we can meet the needs of where they're at. With the support of our new CBO, we were able to determine that the TK laid out for El Moro, that those parents are actually driving themselves to the Boys and Girls Club, meeting the bus there, and the bus is taking them the rest of the way to El Moro. What we discovered through this committee and different fact findings that were going on was that the bus was just idling at the Boys and Girls Club waiting for those parents to arrive. So we've adjusted the route and that bus is now actually driving out and picking up our students and bringing them in because our commitment is to serving all of our students. We've lost quite a few students to ELISO because we don't have transportation for some of our high school students and some of our TK's. Parents out in ELISO cannot get their kids into school. So I'm very proud of the work that we're doing. Those are the things in my mind that the board should be reporting on in a board report is what we're actually getting done. I want to thank Howard Hills actually also for bringing forward the insurance, or not bringing it forward, to Dr. Glass for bringing it forward and for Howard for being very adamant that this should not be imposed on the staff as a money grab or taking money out of their pocket. And I agree with that. I want to make sure that's on the record so that that narrative can stop because it's not true and it's just fabricating a story. So the, back to the transportation, we'll be test piloting Durham Transportation. We have an issue with the, how issues on buses are reported. The issue is recorded on the bus camera. It's then if there's an issue, we have to go in and download it on a thumb drive. They bring it to the computer, upload it, send it over. We download it and then they look into the problem. In this day and age, we have technology called the cloud. We were not using that kind of service. When we challenged Durham Transportation, they said that they were test piloting a new software system that is actually a software system that our new CBO has experienced with and it's very, very highly rated. Durham's at first said, "We could try a new software and we would go ahead and pay for it and it would cost us $60,000." Through further pressure by myself, by, and comments from our new CBO who arrived at the second or third meeting, we determined that we should be able to test pilot this new software as well. And so now we are going to test pilot it and it's not costing us $60,000. So that is the, some of the work that the board is actually doing that should be reported on is that we're bringing our students into schools and we're saving some money. We're kicking off, and that is also honestly clear communication, transparency and accountability in solving problems, which is what I ran on. We're kicking off our arts committee next week with the appointed members with the goal of finishing up the committee elections. I'm very excited about this and honored to be a part of the team that brought this item forward as well. Dee and myself are on the transportation committee and the arts committee and I would love to see more of that being reported. I did, on a personal note, I went to the ASU Family Weekend two weekends ago, two weekends ago now, but one of the things that I was most excited about for this district was participating in a program that is done by Dreamscape Learn. It's a virtual reality education platform that ASU and their tech department is working on with Hollywood filmmakers. I'd give you all the names, but I didn't write them down, so I apologize for that. The experience that we had was sitting at a desk, putting our VR glasses on and we were going into space to the International Space Station and on our way, as we approached and getting ready to dock, there was an explosion and there was white snow in the atmosphere. And so as a student, the goal of this exercise was that they then had to take, go back to their chemistry labs, figure out not only the chemical reaction, what happened, how they can solve it, and then go forward. It was amazing and I'm really excited to bring that idea to the arts committee to look at how we can implement that into our district if that's something of interest. While it's a tech item, it's not a screen and it was very interactive. The goal of the program is a 15-minute interactive VR presentation and then they go back to the classroom for three hours or outside for three hours to work on a solution. The group that was coming in after we got done was an arts history class, so I think that the possibilities are endless for us and that is the goal of this, of this company is to bring education to a whole new level. So I'm really, really excited about that. I attended the Coast Film Festival. Many, many inspiring and environmentally concerning films that do a great job telling a story, whether it's environmental, overcoming odds, or building a community. A huge shout out to the founders of the Coast Film Festival and if you haven't attended before, I highly encourage you to do so next year. Also a shout out to Glow, our environmental and education lead. She's doing a great job and Coast Film actually invited me to their Friday morning session that some of our Thurston kids attended, along with the Community Roots School and a school from Compton, where they watched a film, they spoke with the director on what inspires the storytelling. There was a rotation through with the Pacific Marine Mammal Organization that had a station that talked about the various whales, migration patterns, what they eat. And we even went inside an inflatable whale so we could see the impacts of plastic that is ingested by our marine mammals. It was a great presentation and again, a huge shout out to Glow and our community partners. The Community Film Festival's motto is "Come Curiously Inspired," which I did. I know that I am inspired by the energy and the bonding that was witnessed throughout our community during the past week. And I do continue to struggle how those that are continuing the narrative that pits majorities versus minorities when it comes to the structure of the board and the continual complaining, continued fishing expeditions through our PRAs, which drives legal fees, by the way, which I mentioned earlier, when I believe instead, as a community, we should be more focused on coming together as a community advocating for the kids and programs that benefit from these inspiring learning collaborations in our community. I want to extend my apologies to the first-generation students and support team on missing their big night last Monday. Technical issues seemed to come into play as I didn't translate, it didn't translate from my district calendar to my personal calendar and I lost track of which Monday it was. I hear it was a wonderful program, a wonderful turnout and a great evening and I look forward to joining them at their next presentation. This morning, I was invited to attend a Drawing for the Planet demonstration, an event in partnership with the Laguna Beach firefighters. Drawing for the Planet is a great locally-founded international program that truly creates a full-circle moment. By drawing images of animals in our local habitats or habitats under discussion, maybe it's the oceans, rivers, wetlands, et cetera, they're helping students develop empathy for our environment, our critters and what makes it special. And doing this through art, which gives them something tactile to help understand the importance of protecting our, of our environment. We discussed the new art committee briefly and are excited to possibly include this program into the discussion. Lastly, I did attend the LBHS PTA meeting and I was saddened to hear that the board report was based on opinion and not on the facts of what the board is doing. Included in the board report were disparaging remarks targeting our superintendent and board president claiming that "It's a rap" had been taken over by two board members and that's not the case. The board president and the superintendent wrote the "it's a rap" portion and it's accurate. To state that a non-affiliated organization is more accurate reporting the actions of the board is misinformation and to Aaron Berry's point last month, we want to be clear that our communications are accurate. Finally, to the point that seemingly hundreds of PRs for communication between a board member and leadership, I'd like to remind all of you, including staff, that making those requests drives our legal fees as well as that some others like to point out. These are issues between two grown adults and while I'm not crazy about the optics of it, it's between them and for them to work out. The rest of us need to stay focused on what we're doing. And so again, in the spirit of community and to be the leadership examples we want our kids to model, I know personally I'm trying very hard to stay in the lane of the board, uphold transparency, integrity and the actions for students' benefits. I am not focused on wasting taxpayer dollars, combing through emails, trying to find ways to bully, harass and intimidate elected officials trying to a job they volunteered for and were elected to uphold. Thank you for your time. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I had a great meeting with our union representatives. We tried to be very open and honest with each other. I had a class with Khan Academy and they are really working on having more teacher input and making it more friendly for teacher use while they're tutoring their students. Also attended the Coast Film Festival and I love that they provided programs for all of our students from third grade through 12th grade. And big shout out to Glow also. I had several meetings with the superintendent. I loved watching the student films from all over and our student panel at the film festival was terrific. I also attended the transportation committee meeting. I also attended the Drawing for the Planet and the next mural, there's a beautiful one at Top of the World now. The next one will be at El Moro. I also attended a class on student voice with Dr. Cassandra Villa and, you know, I loved a lot of things she said, but one of the things she said was talking about if you, if you've taught and you, we've all had a student that was kind of irritating and you, to think about it in that student's terms, what do they need from you? And she told a story about one of her students and, you know, I had a couple of these that was always drumming on the table as she's trying to teach English. And the student goes off on his way and he contacted her a couple of years ago and he's a drummer for Bruno Mars. And he also, I had this most beautiful quote. He said, "Thank you for loving us while we were becoming." It's a great quote for our students. Okay. Done with board reports, I think. Now approval of student board member course credit. Our student board members requested that this be placed on the agenda for discussion and approval. I understand that after additional consideration, there may be a change to the request. First, they were thinking, they are allowed to be paid, they are allowed to get credit and they are allowed to get volunteer hours, not all of the above. And I think Logan is going to speak to this item.
Yes, Keon has some stuff to add as well, but we, to touch on your original point, we decided as student board members, Ivy and I, that it's, we feel that the student board member role, especially just not for us, but for student board members of the future, should not be something that has any kind of fiscal incentive, but it should be part of your civic duty. And we, however, we do believe that the work that we do does pertain value and that it, instead of being evaluated, which comes with course credit and there's a lot of other externalities that come with gaining course credit, it would be safer for future members of the board and just more seamless in general for community service hours to be awarded. Community service hours are, the way board members would be earning community service hours, it would be evaluated by not only the amount of time that they spend on, at meetings, but also the amount of time that's spent on board, building board reports or spending time with, going to different school sites across the district or meeting with principals, that type of work also. So that, that's where we're coming from it, is we, we have no intention of getting paid. We, at this point, unfortunately, I don't have Ivy with me right now to, to speak to this, but from the last time I spoke to her, she had no interest in gaining elective credit, but it was community service hours that we think is most beneficial for the position for not only our role as the student board members, but also for the future student board members to come.
Thank you. We, we think you're really, really valuable and we would probably be happy to go whichever way you wanted, but I think that probably is the best way to go. And Keon, did you want to speak too?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I think Logan has some great points that he pointed out there. And I think at the end of the day, initially, I wasn't even aware that we were being given something for this. I just, I joined this to be like a helping part of the community and in order to help my school out. I didn't know that we were going to get something out of it, so I'm just honestly surprised in full that we're even getting something out of it. But yeah, so Logan brought this up with me the other day and how we had a few options and one of them was elective course credit and then the other one was volunteer hours. And we ultimately came to the agreement that, you know, we would rather have volunteer hours than course credit because course credit's more ambiguous and, you know, just volunteer hours would help in terms of college. But yeah, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
And so it was worth noting, Ivy did just text me and said that she's, she's with it in spirit. She, she wants community service hours as well.
I know she is. Thank you.
President Perry, do we need to do anything to the subject of this item before we make any motions or anything like that since it came in as a course credit, but the students would like to have us reconsider and have it be volunteer hours? Like we can approve it or we can vote on it with the amended topic? It's an action?
I can speak to that. The, the item, the board item, there is, as we talk about, there's just for clarification, there is ed code that allows them to be compensated for, with a stipend or a course credit. The volunteer hours is a site decision which Dr. Allman fully supports. They're going towards a community service hours, which this role clearly exceeds the graduation requirement of 40 hours, but they would definitely be supportive of that as well. So, but that would not be a board, board action, the board actions related to the ed code if we were to give them credit or a stipend, which we, which we, they legally could receive if they'd like to.
So we just need to change that it's not an action, it's just an information? So we just need to change that it's not an action, it's just an information? Right? So it's just an information at that point then, because we don't need to take action on it?
You don't need to do anything at this point, since they've changed their minds.
Okay, thanks. Yes?
We will, Chad will confirm with Principal Allman that that's your decision and move forward from there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayberry, Dr. Mayberry. Approval of pre-designated events for board member attendance. This item was brought forward at the request of a board member. The intent is to allow participation in local events without requiring approval from the board for attendance or payment by the district. All events must relate to education and may put a not-to-exceed amount if we so wish. Board member questions? Board member Malchuski, go ahead with your question.
Before we have a discussion about this, I would like Mr. Danforth to explain the California Code Gift of Public Fund rules about reimbursements for, if you don't mind.
Hello, testing, testing. Okay. So ultimately, the gift of public fund rules rest on the legislature, the legislative body's determination as to what is going to be considered, either something that's a public benefit or something that would be an improper gift to public funds. The legislature has fairly wide discretion for that. One key point is that any decision by the legislative body needs to be prospective, cannot be retroactive. So we can't be approving something in the past, making that, you know, providing compensation or something for, that was not previously approved. And really, it comes down to an assessment of that legislative body as to whether it thinks it's imparting a public benefit to the district, the community as a whole, with regard to whatever the funds that they're using are being used for.
So if they, so we would need to make a determination that any request for an expense to be covered is fulfilling some sort of public good?
Yes.
And that public good has to be related very specifically to doing this particular job? Like, public good, you could say a lot of things are public good, but we're a member of a school board. So how would you define public good in the context of a school board?
I would say it would have to go towards the benefit of the school district, of the community of the school district. I mean, obviously, this isn't a state legislature. You don't have as wide a discretion to create some sort of public benefit program for a wide variety of different topics. There's no tax, you know, incentives, anything like that. It has to be specific to, is this going to be something that helps improve the student community, helps improve the education of the students, helps improve the district functioning or efficiency, something along those lines, within the district's business?
Is, so if, I have a question. So the role of the board, right, is to also, one of the roles of the board is not only oversight and accountability for our district's finances, our fiduciary responsibility, but it's also to build relationships within the community and develop partnerships within the community. Is that correct?
I would say that is generally correct, yes.
So if the board is participating in events that, like, for example, the Coast Film Festival's on the list, the Laguna Chamber events, and I know we have a membership to the Chamber, and so as a board, we can attend any of the Chamber events, State of the City Mayor's Luncheon. I mean, there are different, there are different situations throughout the community that are board-building opportunities as we look to strengthen our relationships within the community. That would, would that be appropriate or not appropriate?
I would say that is up to the district and, or the board to make that decision, whether they believe that fits within the context of what would be something for the benefit of the district. It's hard for me to say that because I'm not part of the legislative body. I mean, the district and the body, the legislative body has a fairly wide discretion to make that determination. But it does have to be something that you can specifically tie to the district, and it has to be something that would have an articulable basis for improving relations or gathering information for a district, you know, program, something along those lines.
So would it be correct to make a distinction between a board member who wanted to create relationships for themselves and be out in the community versus needing to create a relationship because it directly serves the school district or the programs that we serve? That's two very different things. I think it's really good to know people in the community because I'm on the school board and I want them to know me, is very different from, I need to be at this because I will be interacting with somebody who knows something about, I'll throw something out, the Arts Committee or the Transportation Committee, and so very specifically, there's a, like, business purpose, if you will.
I mean, I would say if it's very clearly for personal gain, that probably is less likely to have a public benefit for the district, but again, it's sort of something that needs to be decided by the legislative body.
Perfect, thank you. Is there, was there a suggested cap if we were to do this? Is that a cap per event? Is it a cap per person? Is it a cap for, as a budget line item? How is this, Minos, how is something like this, has something like this ever been done in previous districts that you've been at, and how does that work?
So, I have seen several ways it's done. You have a travel budget, travel and conference budget for board members. It can change every year, but usually it's the same for each board member up to a certain, so the board member has the discretion to attend some conferences, in-state or out-of-state. And in other districts, there is an overall budget for five board members or seven board members. Some board members would take advantage of going to some conference, some doesn't, so. So I've seen it both ways, where there is an individual cap, $10,000 or $14,000 for each board member, or there is a $50,000 budget for the superintendent for board travel. And then, sometimes I've also seen, sorry, one more addition, what kind of, I don't even said, sometimes a superintendent would buy a table at the city mayor's luncheon and would invite the board members. So that way, it's not on individual board members, but the superintendent feels having that board represented in the city mayor's luncheon or an event like that where establishment of relationship that can mutually benefit both the district and the city.
Yeah, and if I can add one more thing, like, a very common thing that happens is, and you probably all are aware of it, that, like, the CSBA conference, right? That's very clearly something that's beneficial to the district because it gives all of the board members an opportunity to learn about governance and all the different things that go into running a school district. It would include the travel, it would include, you know, a lot of the other things that go on, and it's not necessarily cheap, but it is something that, you know, is effectively for the public benefit.
Victoria, what's our past practice in this area?
Past practice has been things like the mayor's breakfast, or lunch, whatever, you know, we just, yeah, CSBA has to come to board for approval. It has depended on the board, actually, as to what needs to come for approval. So, smaller things like $50 usually don't, but if somebody wants to go to a lot of different things, then we usually bring it before the board.
Have we done that though? Has, have we ever had a board member who routinely charged?
Not in the last 10 years.
I understand board members pay out of pocket, have paid out of pocket in the past, but I'm wondering if we would not attract a more diverse consideration of candidates for the board if they knew that they could represent the board, could do their job, and not be as burdened financially, for example. I mean, not every board member that, not everybody that wants to consider it possibly is able to have the resources to do that.
Okay, let's have our questions first.
Sorry.
Any more questions? Okay. Comments? Public comments? Okay.
Keta Brown?
No. CSBA, absolutely. All these other things. We are a tiny town. Everybody knows everybody. You can just find somebody at Ralph's or Pavilions if you need to say something. If you want to go somewhere, great, do it, but do it on your own dime.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. Well, I always look your way first, so. Go ahead.
I'm gonna just go rate my concerns about this. We are invited to attend most school events. Every school event is open to us, and that gives us pretty much all the information we need to do our job. It's true that students have films at the Coast Film Festival. The Flo films are fantastic. They also show them for free at the Rivian, and we all get an invitation, and we get to go to the schools to see, you know, the proposals, the documentaries. So there's no real need that we be at the Coast Film Festival to see the films that our students do. In fact, there aren't really community events I can think of that are required to be a good board member. We're provided with these opportunities weekly to learn more about what our students are doing in our schools. There is no need to attend community events for cost to do this work. It's really nice, but it's just not necessary to do a good job on the board. I also, the optics of this seems really odd to me. Like, our staff has voted no confidence in the board, and we're asking funds, for funds to go to citywide social events that are unnecessary to the work of our, of the board. If we want to fund people to attend education-related events, I'd like it to be students and teachers, not board members. And I think we should be spending a lot more time on understanding how the district runs so that we can have meetings that are three hours and save a lot of money for the public rather than going on for five or six. But the bigger issue for me is how do you even police this? You could argue, well, historians of education argue, that everything is education. Education is community, church, family, schools. And you could make an argument that most events in the city redound some sort of benefit that is educational. And this is setting up some sort of, you know, policing effort to figure out which things meet a specific bar that says, yeah, we really need to be doing that in order to do a better job on the board. And I just don't see, like, it's lovely to go to the Coast Film Festival, but I don't see how it's legitimate to charge that to the district when you, I didn't get to go this year. I was away. I think I can still do a good job up here. It's not necessary to be charging the district for that. So I am strongly opposed to this. That's my comment.
Okay. Yes?
Just to give a comment from, as a student who, like, does organize a lot of events through things like MUN, a lot of the first people that we're told to invite is the school board members. Like, I agree with what trustee Malchuski was saying, where that is just an incredibly common thing that happens. So, at least from a lot of the students that I've talked to, and as a student who does this, I just don't really see any real necessity for this. It's already kind of built into being elected as a member of the Board of Education.
Thank you. What?
I ask city council members as far as what's the, what do they pay for? And most of the stuff is, they pay out of their pocket, except for the State of the Union address that is basically paid for by the city. So I think that's a good model to follow.
Board member Morgan, do you want to have any other comments?
I don't think so. I think everybody has really good points. I think I do want to point out, though, one of the things that I have come across a lot is running into people that, at different events, because I do attend a lot of events, with the idea of building those relationships. So, and people are frequently commenting about how they've not seen school board members at events. And certainly, as we came on board, one of the comments, even through the city, was building better relationships with the board, with the community, with city council. And so I think that this topic coming forward is interesting because I think it does support the idea of a more unified community and working together, especially with the city. I know, I've just, I met with Bob Whalen, I've met with different city people and different community members, and the idea of being more visible in the community to support our schools was a very positive conversation and seemed to be something that people would be very open to because they would like to see more involvement from the school board in our community as a whole.
Thank you. I also, I see some practical parts. I have paid myself, but gone to different chamber events because I'm looking for people who can mentor or possible career choices for students. And I've gone to some of the business ones also, thinking, always looking for somebody for students as far as talking to them about a career or maybe taking in an intern. But again, I didn't charge anybody for that. I do think that it does look good to support different groups in our community. I'm not, you know, I've never asked for money for this. I don't feel strongly either way. I do feel, though, that a board member, if they really feel they should go to something, I don't think they should have to pay. I know being a board member actually costs quite a bit of money. At least, it does me. And I don't think board members should really, you know, we're volunteering lots and lots of hours that we should also have to be paying to go to things that we should go to.
Yeah, but we don't have to go to them. It's nice when we go to them, and we also live in a small town. It's like, we see people all the time, and there's all kinds of free events. And the issue for me is not that I want people to have to pay an unfair burden in terms of cost. The issue for me is that you can do business all over town all the time, and there is no actual board purpose that we need to charge the district for in terms of, you know, these various things that, you know, like, the Coast Film Festival's really nice, but we can see the films without paying for them. It's a nice social event. So I certainly understand why people would want to go to that. I just think you're setting up a weird bar of having to individually judge all different items as to whether or not they have educational value. The issue is really, is it required to do this job?
I understand that, but for me, looking for, you know, my job on college and careers and looking for careers, I could walk around to every business in town. That would take a tremendous amount of time. It's much easier to just go to Laguna Beach Business Meeting or go to a Chamber thing.
President Perry, have we had a motion for discussion?
So, I, you know, I understand about the Coast Film Festival. I don't know that it should be these specific things, but I'm not opposed to paying for a board member to do something that they think is valuable for our students.
Did we have?
I move that we do not support this motion.
Okay, well, let's vote. Then, how many, if you do not support the motion?
Aye.
How many do support the motion?
Aye with a cap.
Aye.
It's two-two, so it's table, or it's not tabled, but it's dead because it's, it's an even vote, right?
Motion fails.
Perfect.
Okay, we're to approval of the annual organizational meeting for 2025. This is in accordance with the California Ed Code. The Orange County Department of Ed requests districts submit the date of their 2025 The Orange County Department of Ed requests districts submit the date of their 2025 Annual Organization Meeting by November 21st, 2025. This will ensure proper reporting and compliance with statutory requirements. Our meeting is scheduled for December 11th, 2025. Board member questions?
Can we add dates to the, that'll be proposed at the annual organizational meeting as part of that organizational meeting within this motion?
This is just the establishment of this one meeting.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, are there any speaker cards?
No, there are not.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the establishment of the annual organizational meeting?
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Review and discussion of governance practices and the role of the board. In order to manage a more orderly and less disruptive policy and review process, we would like to discuss general governance principles so we don't need to debate fundamental principles over and over at each meeting. Mr. Danforth is here to assist us. We will start with some questions for each board member to answer, if you want, and then Mr. Danforth will give us legal guidance. If we can agree on some basic principles, the road forward will not be so rocky and will be more of a freeway. So our first question is, what is meant by a strong superintendent and a weak board? A weak superintendent and a strong board? Can there be a strong superintendent and a strong board? Board members? Yeah, all the board members, I'm hoping, we're hoping will answer.
Strong superintendent, weak board, weak superintendent, strong board, strong superintendent, strong board.
I'm not sure I actually know how to answer that because it's a, that, I have a, a sense of the way that the district is supposed to work based on the fact that we have a superintendent who is supposed to run the day-to-day operations of the district and a board that provides oversight. Whether a board is stronger or weaker, or the superintendent is stronger or weaker, I don't know how to put that into some sort, I, I don't know how to articulate any meaning out of that.
Okay, but have you heard those terms before?
No, I just, whenever you talk about businesses, companies, the Department of History, sometimes you have a strong chair and a strong executive committee, and sometimes it just changes the way that dynamics work in terms of getting things done. Right?
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else?
So I do, because I've been in this room for so long. I know at one point, we had specific quotable comments made that we are, and this is not me, this was what was being said at the board level at that time. The president stated, "We are a weak board, and we defer all of the decisions to the superintendent." And so in that, what that tells me is that that would be a weak board, strong superintendent situation where the board really has designated everything and all the decisions for staff and the superintendent to make, and they really are essentially just rubber stamping everything that comes through. That would meet, to me, would be a weak super, a weak, weak board, strong superintendent. A weak superintendent and a weak board, or a strong board, in my mind, would be a, uh... It would probably be something along the lines where there was micromanaging, right? Having, for the board to direct staff or direct the superintendent or the CBO, you need to hire somebody and then demand or expect that they would hire them, and they would, and the, the executive team would comply. That would be, to me, a strong board, and not necessarily a good board, but a strong board and a weak superintendent. A strong superintendent and a strong board, in my mind, are, are groups of, you know, as a board and the superintendent that work very well together, that balance each other, that give a recommendation based on input from a superintendent that brings research, maybe they bring a variety of options, not just one option, but a variety of options, like I appreciated Minoj bringing forward. You know, four options, but not limited to. It wasn't, these are the options. It was, you know, these are some things to consider, and we'll go from there. That, to me, is a strong working relationship between a superintendent and a board that allows good oversight and good fiscal accountability and good fiscal oversight, but is not getting in the weeds, but is working in partnership to bring the best forward in our community, our district, and our, on behalf of our students and our staff.
Say anything?
I like Joan. This is a policy board, and I believe our role is to make policies. And I believe that you have a, we hire one person, and that person is responsible for all the staff and for implementing the policies. So I believe in both a strong board and a strong superintendent. But the role of the board is to make policy. The role of the superintendent, as far as, is to implement the policies and to manage the staff, and I don't believe that we should be involved in, at that level, with as far as, it's the superintendent's job.
So you're saying, strong board, but stay in your lane, strong superintendent stays in his lane. Okay. Mr. Danforth?
I mean, I think it's hard to provide a definition. I think Sherry was about along the lines of what I would say as far as a strong board is a board that wants to be interested and involved in making decisions. A board certainly has the authority and the duty to oversee the district from a high level, make sure that it's overseeing the policy decisions, making sure that the finances are in order at the end of the day after reviewing budgets, things along those lines. A weak board would be one that, you know, is very passive, leaves all of the decision-making to perhaps personnel and the superintendent, and then vice versa, right? I think that a functioning district has both a strong board and a strong superintendent, both of which who collaborate and work together, and they function within their roles, because I think that there are roles between the board and the superintendent. The superintendent obviously is hired by the board to act as the chief executive officer of the district. So that individual has duties to oversee the daily operations of the school district, has duties to make sure that hiring, they're hiring appropriate people who are credentialed and who have all the certifications that are needed. And while, while the end decision, for example, to hire somebody, is the board's. The superintendent and his staff members are the ones that want to bring those people in and produce them and, and make them available for the board to make the final decision. I guess that would be sort of my high-level, not high-level, but, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you, that, that was great. Like the city, we are local legislators. Our bylaws say they are binding. Do bylaws have the effect and force of law? What can the consequences be? Should the board adopt consequences? Yep. Our bylaws say they are binding. Do bylaws have the effect and force of law?
We just have the attorney answer that question.
Do, do bylaws have the effect and force of law? What can the consequences be?
You're asking me? Sorry. I thought that was going to be a question for everybody. Okay. Yeah, absolutely, I can jump in. So this is a situation where I have to say it depends, which is an attorney's favorite word. I would say, generally speaking, the superintendent and the board have a duty to uphold the policies that have been created. The Education Code requires that policies be created in order to make the district function, and there's a number of Education Code sections that specifically for that subject matter require policies to be created. One example would be just simply for the time of meetings, right? For a, a board meeting. That's governed by policy, it's also required by statute. Required policies for student participation in curricular and co-, or extracurricular and co-curricular activities. Those are things that are specifically required by statute. There are some policies that aren't necessarily directly required by statute but are good practice, because again, they help create and foster clarity in the district and transparency. They also provide very clear processes for doing certain things, and they just ensure consistency in the way that rules are applied or the way that the district is functioning. Are, are policies given the same binding effect as law? Yes, they are. And especially if the policy is something that requires, or that's a process for the board to make an action. If the board makes an action, doesn't follow policy, somebody can file what's called a petition for writ of mandate with the civil court, saying, "Hey, court, they didn't follow their internal policies, they're a legislative, legislative body, they created these policies, and if they don't follow those policies, the court can then overturn that action." Okay? It can also create problems with the Brown Act insofar as that applies to whatever the policy is at issue. There's obviously a lot of procedural policies like the UCP, Uniform Complaint Procedures, which you have to follow the code of regulations. Districts, it's good practice to create a policy that very clearly lays all of that out so that people know what it is that they're getting into, how to file the complaint, do all those things. If the district doesn't comply with that policy, they're effectively violating statute. That's a whole separate issue, right? Same thing with Public Records Act requests. If those are not complied with, it not only violates usually the policy, but it could also be a petition for writ of mandate similarly. When it comes to, for example, supervision policies, it's very important for the district to follow those policies and also make sure that the policies are up to date and in compliance with all of the current law, because if you get sued down the line for negligence, for example, and the plaintiff says, "Hey, jury, this district had a policy, it was out of date, it wasn't up to snuff with the current duty of care that they should have been," that's something that they're going to rely on to show that the district violated that duty and created, created a negligent, negligent situation. So policies are very important for a number of different reasons, not the least of which is sometimes it can result in some sort of a civil action. I think that they're really important for clarity purposes, and it's really important to have detailed policies, which is why virtually every district across the state has very clear policies. You're not necessarily required, for example, to follow CSBA, but CSBA is a very good example because they, what they do is they take what all the districts do across the state, and they go, "What's working? What's not working?" And then they make those revisions, and they try to give districts an opportunity to implement what they believe is the best practices, and they get to sort of take that really, really high-level look at what all these districts are doing. Yeah, I don't, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that helped a lot. So if a district doesn't follow a bylaw or follow a policy that's part of the Ed Code, what are the consequences if somebody is just filing a lawsuit?
It depends on what the particular section is. It could be anywhere from a civil action that includes, you know, damages to a writ petition where the court grants attorney's fees, perhaps if the person who brought the writ petition is successful. And obviously, that can rack up real quick when you have certain attorneys who have an expertise in a particular field, and they're charging, you know, five to eight hundred dollars an hour. Yeah. It can also, one more thing to add, it could also just bring with it administrative oversight from the state, right? So you can, perhaps, it could result in a complaint to CDE, who then comes in, does an investigation, and then issues findings and requires the district to do a bunch of different things. Right?
So the, the board can delegate powers to the superintendent or to other individuals, correct? Yeah. No, that's one of our, that's one of our, please give some examples of powers that can be delegated to individuals other than the superintendent.
So the board can delegate certain duties to different individuals, and it does that. Usually, the board delegates duties to the superintendent, and then the superintendent can delegate those duties to who they think is the appropriate individual. And the best example of that is like bargaining, for example. Right? The superintendent could be the person who does the bargaining, but a lot of times the superintendent will designate an assistant superintendent to handle the bargaining duties. The superintendent, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. As far, as far as designate, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to talk about this in such general terms. So if you have, the board has the ability to delegate certain duties to, like, a board member if they feel that that board member, you know, is going to sit on a certain committee, and they're going to be the one that sort of is in charge of figuring all of that information out, bring it back to the board. Or maybe the, the board designates a specific individual to make comments about a particular subject that's happening at the time. The board certainly has the ability to do that, if there's a majority vote, to do that. So there is the ability to delegate. The, the board also has the ability or, and, and the duty to sort of outline the job descriptions of various people within the district, which would include what duties they're supposed to be in charge of. Right?
Do you know of any examples where a board delegated certain responsibilities to an individual that would usually go to the superintendent?
Like, like what? I'm really trying to understand the question.
Yeah, I, I can't think of anything offhand. I would have to, I would have to have something a little more specific than that, I'm sorry.
Okay. The board has both oversight and fiduciary duties. What is the best method for the board to perform oversight? And what is the best method for the board to perform its fiduciary duties? And I think we can all talk, speak to this. No, they are not. They are mine.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah. What, what, I'll make it easier. What's the best method for the board to perform oversight? I mean, one of our jobs is oversight.
Are you asking Mr. Danforth?
No, I'm asking us, and then he'll answer. Whoever wants to start.
The, the bylaws make pretty clear that we have oversight over what happens in the district. We have broad oversight. And with that oversight, just like if you're in a, a company, you hire people to do particular jobs, and you build trust with them, and you get reports from them, and you check to make sure that they're doing their job. But I don't think it's the job of the board to get involved in the day-to-day operations of a school district or to micromanage decisions that have been delegated by the superintendent to people in the district. So for example, I read through the personnel report, I don't need to see every job description and get information about how payments are calculated because I trust Mr. Conlin has systems in place to do that. That would be a kind of micromanaging that I don't think the board has to do. We do overlook the budget, for example, and we should understand what's in the budget and ask questions so that we are operating, you know, our fiduciary responsibility and general board oversight. But it does not, for me, oversight does not include being involved in any way with the day-to-day operations of the district.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Asking questions. I'm looking at Jim because I know Jim doesn't like to ask a lot of questions. To me, oversight is... To me, oversight is directly related to asking questions, understanding what is being presented, not just oversight on the budget, because I think if we had oversight, we probably wouldn't have had Menoche stand before us and give us a lengthy presentation on our insurance benefits, right? So that would have been something that I would have thought somebody would have asked a question along the way of, okay, so these are percentages, but what's the actual number? So, that to me would be oversight where we are questioning and not to, and I think maybe this is where some of the tension might be coming from because I know way back in January, right, we were talking, I brought forward Policy 1100. And the whole purpose of bringing that forward was to look at the policy, look at what we're doing, and determine, is the policy aligning with what our actions are? And really, it was specifically related for me in my inquiries about two-way communication. Are we doing things like radio programs and updates out to the community that are district-focused, not student-focused and private, nothing specific about students, but about communicating out what the board is doing? Because again, in the process of running for the seat last November and speaking to many, many people, it was, I have no idea what they're doing. I don't know what they do up there. I don't know what, where money is being spent. I don't know any of that. And so, to me, oversight is not only asking the questions and asking for clarification and understanding so that we can better serve our students and also the staff. Because oversight would have prevented some of the issues that are happening with our insurance. And that starts by asking questions, being curious, not just moving the agenda along, not saying, I trust everyone. Because to me, trust is earned, but there should also be a level of respect that we can ask questions and not have it be challenged that we're insulting staff. Because our job, as has been identified, is to uphold policy. And so if we see something that we're challenged to think that maybe we're not totally aligned, then as a board member, it's our job to say, hey, can we look at this and evaluate it? That's not an insult to staff. That's not saying that nobody's doing their job. It's, hey, we want to do best practices and we want to do the best job that we can. And so I have questions. But up until recently, all of our questions were, oh my God, you're insulting people. And it's like, no, that's, this is our job, is to ask questions and oversight. And I mean, I've got texts from different people saying, don't people understand that oversight is asking questions, is understanding, is making sure our policies align with what the actions that we're doing? And clearly, we have uncovered many instances where there was no oversight. We have students that were not being served at the high school because the middle school bus that the high school students can get on at Aliso didn't stop at the high school. That's it. All we had to do was say, hey, can you stop at the high school? And we did, and now they are. And that's it. That's oversight. That's what this job is about. That's why I'm sitting here, because I don't think people were asking enough questions over the last several years. And if that's insulting to staff, I'm really sorry because I love our staff, but I am going to ask questions because oversight to me is asking questions. It's not getting into the day-to-day. It's not telling our CBO, you should hire someone else. That's getting in the weeds. So, that to me is what oversight is. I'm sorry that I'm emotional, but I feel like some of this stuff and this noise that's out there is because it was created, not because it exists.
Okay.
Ms. Morgan, I just want to make the point, though, oversight is not inciting fear into staff members to the point where they don't, they don't want to like publicly make comments. There have been teachers who I've spoken to today, prior to this meeting, who said that they feel the need now to make their name anonymous teacher instead of putting their actual names in fear of getting nasty emails from certain people on the board or being publicly called out by on the board. And that's not oversight. That's inciting fear into faculty members of Laguna Beach Unified School District, which is not, not only part of the board's job, but also just not okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. But I also, I also think oversight includes asking a lot of questions. And I think it also involves doing our own research. I don't think we trust everything that comes along, that it's correct. So, I have a different opinion.
So, of course, we have to operate with that kind of oversight, but the way that you do it, it's about leadership. And you don't call people out in meetings. You don't put a communication plan on the agenda without saying to the communication director, just a heads up. I put the plan on here. I think it's a great plan, but I want to ask some questions. I don't want you to be worried that you're being called out for some reason. The communication director should not have to worry all week long that their plan has been put on the agenda and nobody's had the decency to tell them why. You can go to Dr. Glass. You can go to staff that, with permission of Dr. Glass. You can talk to teachers by going through the union and say, hey, I have a question about something. But honestly, your version of oversight is to call out people in public in ways that are completely insensitive to the fact that they are trying to do a job. They work really hard every day. They're doing the best job that they can do. And to ask questions as though it's not just, can you help me understand this? It's, I don't trust your expertise. Let me ask a whole bunch of questions because I'm not sure you're doing this right. That is the way this board makes people feel. And that's not oversight. It's really, really bad leadership. And there are, I have never, in three years of being on this board, come to meetings and felt like I don't understand what's on the board agenda or I don't know what people are doing. And when I do have those questions, I get them answered. I meet with the superintendent, I ask questions. I ask for, I have met with Mike Morrison, by having permission from the superintendent to do so, and ask questions about instructional technology. I don't out people at board meetings and make people feel fearful. The, the community, the staff doesn't like the board for that reason. You incite fear. You call people out in meetings and you're not at all.
This is a general conversation. This is not a personal attack.
No. I'm talking about the board. The board is not sensitive. The board is not sensitive to what it means to ask questions on the dais, recognizing that human beings are doing the job and should be appreciated.
I agree. And that, therefore, we should not be telling our new CBO to hire more staff. So I'm not really sure the intention of the comment, because at the end of the day, oversight is asking questions, doing our own research, and ensuring our policies align with what we're doing. And that's a pretty simple explanation in my mind. And if asking questions instills fear in staff, that's unfortunate because that means they haven't been questioned in the past and it's not something they're comfortable with. I asked very, the communications item that you're referring to, I did ask for, to have it put on. It was a discussion between the acting superintendent and myself. There was no, and I made it very clear, many people asked me questions about what it was about. And I said, it's really simple. I just want to make sure we have two-way communication because I have some people telling me that they're not getting any information. It was pretty basic. And when I asked that question, it was an attack on how dare you insult staff. It's like, there was no insult. I thought, I said, I thought the presentations were great. I thought the graphics were great. I thought everything was great. Hey, can we look at this two-way communication? So I do think that part of this oversight issue is the fact that people are villainizing the idea of asking questions. And that's not oversight. Because if we, again, if we had oversight and people were asking questions on the board, we would know what the insurance issue was for the last four years. It wouldn't have been ignored for four years because there was no questions asked. So, you know, you can't have oversight and not ask questions. And if questions are insulting, that's too bad.
Nobody said you didn't get to ask questions. I've had many staff, you know what? My staff always feel supported by me and I know what they're doing. So, asking questions isn't the problem.
You're saying it's the way the questions are asked and when they are asked.
This is Morgan. I want to give you just a real example tonight. I did not tell the assistant superintendent to hire someone. I suggested that the consultant said that was one of the reasons why we're in the, we had the problem that we had.
You should do that. That's what you said.
I'm sorry if I said that, but that, it was, it was my recommendation to him to rethink it. That was my recommendation. But you have characterized this as my wanting to force this on them. That's not ever my intent to do.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
But I think three times you have gone after me with that.
Mr. Danforth, can you enlighten us?
Yeah. I, I think board oversight comes down to a couple of things. It just simplifies it. Setting goals and expectations, clear goals and expectations, and then monitoring the results of those goals and expectations. I think it's important that the board is informed, obviously, because you can't make a decision without being informed. I think those are the key aspects. And then how the board goes about doing that, that's sort of their, their method, you know, whatever works for that board. I, I think that it's, it's very helpful to make sure that you understand all of the topics that are being discussed, obviously. I mean, a lot of these topics are very complex. Sometimes it might require more than one presentation. Sometimes it might require, you know, a couple of different analyses, you know, whatever the case may be. It's definitely important to do some of your own research, to reach out to, you know, if you're looking for maybe new curriculum ideas because you want to be involved in that, you know, go out, do that, propose it, right? I think that's a good idea. So, I guess, because it's a very broad question, my response would be, set very clear goals and expectations and then monitor the results of those goals and expectations. And if they're not meeting your standards, then come up with a different method for maybe being more specific or trying to identify what the problem is and then be informed about all of the decision-making.
Thank you. That's helpful. Set our goals specifically, ask questions, do our own research, be respectful. Okay. Let's see. We often hear the board acts as a whole and has no individual authority. What does this actually mean? For example, board members volunteer on different committees such as school power, facilities committee, transportation committee, et cetera. In various roles, they represent the board but speak as individuals.
I don't know what you're asking.
I'm asking, what does it mean that the board, that the board acts as a whole and has no individual authority?
Do you want me to answer first? Okay. I do. But, okay. So, that comes from the idea in, or not the idea, but the rule in the Education Code that requires that the board act by majority vote for all actions, right? So if we're talking about any board action or district-wide action, it has to be accomplished through a majority vote of the board. And so that's why individual board members don't have the ability to make a decision or do something on behalf of the district without majority vote. As far as, you know, volunteering on various committees, I mean, typically, you know, board members are appointed to a particular committee. That's a decision that's made by the board to do that particular task. If a board member is asked to be in charge of certain communications, that's again, that would be something that would be decided by the board majority. And that way, that person is in charge of that particular task. And the reason for that is because you don't want, you want to be able to control the board's message, right? Because the district has a vision, the district has a path. You don't want an individual board member going off and going rogue, for lack of a better way of saying it, and, you know, saying whatever they say and representing that that's on behalf of the board. So, the board has an incentive to make sure that their vision is put forward. And that's done through a majority vote. I want to make clear that, you know, the board should try to act in unity, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they need to act unanimously, right? It doesn't require unanimous approval. Just requires board approval, but the board should try to work together in reaching whatever that goal is.
Can I have a follow-up? Do you know the concept unity of purpose that all boards are supposed to abide by?
Yes.
Could you tell us about that?
Well, I think.
I think this board has a really hard time with that.
I, I think, again, it goes towards the, the main purpose and the main reason why the board is elected is to represent really the students, right? Probably the only elected officials really out there who are up there to try and promote the best learning environment for the kids in the community. That's what the board members are there to do. So I think that with that unity and purpose, obviously, there are disagreements that can happen. It's just a matter about, a matter of how the board functions within those disagreements. Trying to, I guess, be respectful, that sort of thing, that helps the board function, you know, more efficiently. You don't always have to agree with your neighbor, but, and if the majority of the board votes one way, then we move forward with whatever that decision is.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? So when you're, when you are the representative of the board at different events or different meetings, like let's take PTA, for example, is the role of that, at that, like I go to the community coalition, that's one of the committees, and the joint fiscal management, but we never talked about funds, so. Isn't, is it true that what is the best practice on what to report is decisions of the board? Things that are coming up like transportation committee, arts committee, policies that were approved, things that weren't, that, you know, the pool being on track, our facilities are in great shape? I mean, those kind of things. It's not to bring your opinion to the discussion, it's to report on the facts of what the board has decided on. Is that true?
Okay. So, what is the specific?
If you're reporting as a board member.
What is the specific context? I'm sorry, what was?
So we're assigned to committees, school power. So if you're there representing the board.
Yes.
Is the proper procedure to report on the actions of the board? Not an opinion, not anything like that, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Was on various things, which I think I'm allowed to do.
I do that also. I give a clear report of what happened at the board and then I'll say, and as a parent, because I'm at the PTA meeting, and as a, you know, this is my opinion, I am not representing the board in saying this.
I think that's an important distinction. If you are going to make an opinion, I would, that's not something that's been decided by the board. I would suggest making that clarification.
Yeah, I think we're all pretty careful about doing that. And we all have our own opinions and as long as we say, this is my opinion as a citizen, I'm not speaking for the board, we're okay, right? Are there other questions from board members? So, I think, I think I under, I kind of understand your, what your answer will be about these new CSBA policies, but I'll ask anyway. You kind of alluded to, what are the consequences if we don't adopt them?
Well, that, there's a, there's a lot of them, from what I understand. It would have to be sort of on a case-by-case basis. If it's, if it's something that is on a statutory update, it's suggested to change your board policy to reflect the new statute. Because not only does it notify the public who can then easily access your board policies, but it also can protect the district later on down the line if somebody challenges some sort of action by the board and we didn't have a policy that was up to date with the statute, right? We followed the old policy, for example, and not the statute because it was missed or whatever the case may be. If it's in the policy, it becomes a lot easier to make sure that you comply with it, right? Rather than going through all the statute books and, you know, because a lot of these policies isn't just one statute, right? There's usually a few statutes that they kind of incorporate into one policy.
So for our policies that are based on new legislation, we can't just pass one motion that says we will adhere to all new legislation. We, we need to pass separate bylaws for each.
That would not be my suggestion.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Let's go on to the CSBA policies then, unless you would like to say something else, Mr. Danforth?
We have public comments.
Oh, public comment.
Victoria, you can.
Shaheen Sheikh Sidal and Keta Brown.
Go first. I hope that Mr. Hills fares well through his surgery, but I also am wondering why, since he's not here, every one of his questions was asked and his usual circuitous logic, and we had to sit here and listen to that. I'm just, you don't need to answer, I'm just confused. Thanks.
Sorry, these were my questions.
Hi, Shaheen Sheikh Sidal, I'm parent in the district and president of Fuel. I just want to speak to what we watched just now as community members in the back here. That was not an honest effort to understand the law. From our perspective, it was an attempt by this board, a particular people on this board to give cover for a larger, deeply troubling narrative, mostly pushed by member Hills, and yes, we do wish him well, that this board, without educational training or expertise in operations, is somehow equipped to run the district itself. And that theory is not only incorrect, it's dangerous. Tonight's line of questioning seemed designed to retroactively justify insensitive, dismissive, and often demeaning behavior towards staff. And when trustees use counsel, sorry, Mr. Danforth, to seek guidance, not to seek guidance, but to validate their overreach, it sends a clear message that professional expertise doesn't matter, and the board believes it can replace it. But here's the reality. The community doesn't trust this board. Our teachers and staff and classified staff have already taken the extraordinary step of voting no confidence in this board majority, and this board, and particularly the majority. And that's not politics. It is, it should be an alarm to this community and from the people who actually run our schools. This ongoing pattern of trying to overtake and and micromanage the district has real consequences. It harms morale. Staff can't function when they, they are worried about being publicly shamed, as Logan so eloquently put, or second-guessed about doing their jobs. It destabilizes this district. When trustees elevate their personal opinions over professional expertise, you know who suffers? Students. It's the only person you guys are supposed to be serving, actually. And it also signals a slow-motion attempt to seize operational control, and we know that was one of the things that that Mr. Hills wanted to do from the very beginning. So to anyone out here on this dais promoting or enabling this theory that you can run a school from the dais, a school district from the dais, I want to say it's not sustainable, it's not legal, it's not appropriate, and it's not supported by the community you serve.
Okay, can we go on to the first reading of board policies? CSBA recommends revising these policies due to statutory changes. They are cleanup items and are recommended for review and approval to proceed with a second reading at a future meeting. All changes for these policies have been presented in the draft policies and CSBA updates attached to the board items. Mr. Conlin?
Sure. So jumping right in? All right, so Board Policy 0410 is brought forward for a first reading with changes to ed code and government codes related to non-discrimination in district programs and activities. So there's a paragraph that's added. Okay. And then we have Board Policy 0440. Again, this policy is is brought forward as a first reading with suggested changes to align with advancements in technology. While this policy is optional, staff find it helpful.
Are we going to put them all?
Yeah, I thought we would just-
Three at a time.
I thought we just, did we not just determine that we shouldn't do bulk passing of policies?
That what? Sorry.
Did we not just talk about not, didn't you ask a question about passing policies as a bulk?
Yeah.
So we should do it one by one? I think we just had that conversation.
Yes, you-
Thank you. So these three policies were grouped together. Then there are individual policies. These were all very minimal changes. And when we did a gender review, it was agreed that we would do these three, but if you want to take them separately, you can pull them and do them separately.
I think council just recommended that, so.
Council recommended that you not say, we accept all legislative changes. He never said you couldn't.
Oh, got it, okay, well, thank you for the clarification.
That, that was, I wasn't saying that you couldn't accept a couple, like, a group of individual policies that have specific changes.
Okay, great, thank you for the clarification.
Saying we don't want a resolution or something, saying we're just going to comply with all new legislative changes.
Yeah, no, thank you, I did, I misunderstood that then, thank you.
I move that we pass these three amended bylaws and move them to a second reading.
I'd like to amend the motion as I have comments or edits to a couple of them.
Okay, sure.
So, so I move that we approve these three with the changes, okay? I think we had to do that first, we had to make, amend the motion, then we could discuss it. No, okay.
There is no amendment. They, they decided that they were going to discuss the policies before the amended motion. They, they can move to adopt them even as they, they need to discuss it first and then decide.
So on Policy 0410, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph on the first page, the last paragraph, I would like to suggest all individuals shall be treated equitably in receipt of district and home district school services. I don't know that it's clear, it just says school services and as a general statement. Can we be specific as home, or is that too specific?
Say, which paragraph?
The last paragraph, home dis, so all individuals shall be treated equitably in receipt of district and home district school services, like their home district. You know, we, when, like, in the special ed presentation, we talked about sending students out, bringing students, you know, just the different services, but we don't really specify that, that we should, that we should be treating them equitably in our home district.
But if, if we're containing it, isn't it still a district service?
It's a district service, but it may not be in their home district. That's kind of what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to get to.
But as they said tonight in the special ed presentation, they still follow and track what the students are doing in the, we still have a district responsibility because they're, they're attending SELPA as a member of this district. So they're, this covers that.
Sherry, a point of clarification. So are you asking to put language in there to where it would kind of put limits on that, that they would-
I don't want to limit it, I want to make sure it's equitable.
Well, instead of being placed, you're saying, instead of being placed in a, in a, in a program in the SELPA, that they'll be supported in, within the four schools in Laguna Beach?
I think just the, the equitability comment. I guess I, I mentioned that because of the, of the last line where it talks about reduced lunch program and transportation, right? So we have students in Aliso that, we are their home district, but because we didn't provide transportation or a stop at the high school, right? Then that would be, we aren't serving them in their home district. And so I'm trying to make sure we're either covered, clarifying, or upholding what we're trying to do. So I'm just, it's a suggestion.
But we are their home district because they go to school in Laguna Beach.
Right, but no, they don't go to school in Laguna Beach if they don't have transportation. That's my point. That, the, the word transportation in the last line is why I'm asking about home district in the first line. Because we do have students that do not go, that don't go to school here because the parents can't get them here, and so they send them to Aliso schools because it's actually closer to their neighborhood.
Equitably.
And my point is, so I'm asking, is that, are we covered? For, for example, students that didn't have transportation, we need to make sure that we're treating all students equitably. And so we probably would be fortunate that student, that parents out in Aliso didn't come, didn't file a complaint or anything because we weren't providing transportation in their home district. That's, so I'm tying transportation to home district just because this is a topic that's been coming up. So I just want to make sure that this policy is, reflects that, or do we need to change it, do we need to add anything? That's, it's more, do we, not, we have to, I'm asking.
I think this policy is more targeted towards students within the district who are receiving district services. So if they're not attending the district or receiving district services.
So it doesn't need to be specific if they're not attending the, if they're, they're not receiving the services because they can't attend the district, because they don't have transportation.
Then they're not using the district.
But they're attending another school district.
Right, because they don't have transportation from their home district.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think that the policy is clear-
Okay.
-how it's written.
All right, that was my question, that was all.
Yeah.
I, I just, I know we've been talking about transportation, and we have students that don't go to school here because of that. So being the home district, are we, do we need to specify or not? So that was my question on that one, thank you.
Okay, then I, I think we don't have a need to amend that motion.
Not on that one, I've got another one. Okay, so the, are we going through 0440, or 0440, okay? 10, oh. 04, oh, 4, oh, I see, yeah, you're giving this last, okay. So I have a couple of questions on 40, 0440. This is the district technology plan. I wanted to suggest that we, that we ensure in our technol, that we mention something about agentic tools and AI, because that's a little different than when we, when we input the information. Agentic AI is more automatic. So I want to make sure that we're covering that. And I also want to ask that we add a item eight to the district's technology plan shall include but not limited to the following. How much screen time will be utilized or limits to hours using technology for teaching? Because I know there was a big discussion about how many hours we have in screen time, and I know, you know, three hours was suggested, which I know Ivy was like challenged, thinking we would be challenged with that. But we don't, I, we don't put that in our policy, that we, that we were going to uphold screen time, the amount of screen time-
But, Ms. Morgan-
-that we use as a district.
This is specifically the rules around how we manage the use of technology. It's not the pedagogy and classroom management rules about when it was used. It, that's two different things, right? So this is, we want to make sure that our, it, it says that we want to make sure that our students have AI literacy and their digital citizenship. And it speaks to teaching them how to use the actual hardware and software of the technology. Whether we make curriculum decisions to limit how often they're on that is a different kind of, it, it's not, that's not what this policy is about.
My understanding that is that we are going to have an update on AI coming up pretty soon.
There's also a new policy on AI being brought forward after that presentation, but we want you to get that presentation first.
And is specific, specific to AI, not technology? Okay. But that's still, are we not concerned? Were we not just discussing screen time and utilizing it and how it's, and, and the, basically its use in teaching?
Yeah, I don't think that that's about teaching kids how to use it. Computer, it's a separate issue. How often they use it is not the same as the technology plan around the use of the computer itself. That is a curriculum decision about classroom management and pedagogy. It's different than what this plan is, this bylaw is about.
Well, but if we're saying how these technological resources will be used to improve educational services, are we not needing to limit the, the time? Are we, are we not wanting to put a policy in place or add to the policy that we're going to uphold?
Yeah, I just don't know that this bylaw is the place to do that. And I also think that, yeah, I, I think we have to consider the appropriate place. If Dr. Glass is going to implement some sort of curriculum changes, then it's, it's an actual curriculum plan, and I don't know that it belongs here. I think we should pass this as it is and ask that of, of Dr. Glass, where he thinks it should go in the bylaws.
Can we ask our legal counsel on that one? Since Dr. Glass would probably refer to you to make sure that we're compliant.
I don't see an issue with adding something like that. I'd like to look more closely at the language that's proposed. But, I mean, the, the technology plan could, could dictate something like that, I think. I know that there's been a lot of talk about screen time lately, so. But it, I mean, it would, it would definitely be something that would need to be crafted to be broad enough to allow-
So could we have that crafted and brought back for a second read, or do we?
Yeah, it seems like we could just say something like the technology plan incorporates district, district models around the use of screen time. I mean, it should just be something very general because those models might change and the rules around it might change. So that, you know, the, the district should be mindful of, or the, the bylaw, you know, the, the district's technology plan should recognize any, you know, curriculum limit, limits placed on the use of technology. I think that's all you need.
Yeah, I think that that would be, it would be good to keep it broad in case any sort of standards change, but.
But incorporating something is not a bad idea, especially given your earlier comment where we uphold and oversee the policy to ensure that we're aligned with the policy.
Yeah.
Right, so putting something in there saying about general screen time. And to your point, you know, you're right, policies and technol, things are going to change. That's why we do policy review. That's why we do policy updates, is because things change and evolve.
I can just say at the other place something like that may live, which is the policy referenced when we did that presentation in August, is Board Policy 6163.4, student use of technology, which is a little bit more instructional focused as a place where that could be potentially added. I'm not able to access it right now, Board docs is apparently not, not working. Uh, it's 6163.4, student use of technology. But it may be, that may be a place where something like language or verbiage related to that lives.
Right, but I do think we want to uphold some kind of parameters on screen time. I mean, that's what the community's been asking for, is that we are more stringent with our screen time and putting, I mean, and because to the point, we have students' use of technology, we have a district technology plan, we're going to have a policy on AI. So having it appear in different places as appropriate language for that policy is not a bad idea.
Can we make a note to work on 6163.4 in upcoming policies after the AI and other presentations in December?
That's a great idea.
And then this one as well, 0440, we'll move this one off and table it as well.
If it goes, if it's a curriculum, and it goes into the curriculum plan. I don't think it belongs here, but it also doesn't matter. I think we should just move ahead.
Okay, then, so we pull 0440 and have it looked at for that?
Well, they're, no, we'll eventually get pulled. We have to do the AI thing first. So we can't pull it for the next meeting.
Well, this isn't about AI, it's about screen time.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I don't know. I thought, I thought that was getting updated later when we get to those. We just haven't gotten to those yet.
We could do this as a first reading and approve it. And then when it comes back to the second meeting, or hold it for the second meeting after the AI discussion.
Yeah, I just don't know that it use, yes, but I think the AI discussion is going to impact the 6,000 series, not this one. And I think we should just approve this because it's going to come up in the 6,000 series.
And 6163.4 is referenced in this statute, or, I mean, this policy, this proposed policy.
So it may be a good idea to wait, to resolve the 6163.4 policy and then perhaps incorporate something into this one if needed.
Then are you recommending approve? Because I, we also need to be careful, are we setting- Because I, I, we also need to be careful, are we setting a precedence that we're going to approve these tonight on a first reading? Because I think we just went through.
The motion was to move them to a second reading.
Okay. Okay, well, because I know Jim just said that let's approve it and move on. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Approve the first reading, Sherry.
Okay, I didn't, you didn't add first reading.
To it as far as, or have the superintendent give us direction.
Is there anything for four, five, zero? Sherry?
Have it flagged. No, I don't have anything for that one, I have it flagged, I don't have anything for it.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Four, ten, four, 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 fifty.
Yeah, four, ten, four, forty, four, fifty.
Aye. To a second reading.
Moving them for a second reading.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, um, now, are there speaker cards for this?
No.
Okay.
I move that we approve this for a second reading.
Second.
Which one, 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 three, one, one, three, one, two?
One, 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 three.
Any discussion? Any discussion about one, 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 three? Nope, okay. Call for a vote then.
Aye.
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 Student vote?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't ask you. Um. Now, uh, first reading, board policy one, three, one, two, point three, uniform complaint procedure. Mr. Conlon?
Yes, thank you. So board policy one, three, one, two, point three is brought forward for a first reading, incorporating changes to align with the ed code, updated federal Title IX regulations, and some new court decisions.
Board member questions?
Does item nine under complaint subject to UCP? We've got one through ten. Is item nine course periods without educational content? Would tutorial fall under that if it's not being used for education? But if it's being used for events and, and things like that, is that something we need to be mindful of?
I'm sorry, Sherry, where are you?
Number nine.
So policy, board policy one, three, one, two, point three, uh, which is D. Item nine, course periods without educational content. We have, um, periods at the high school, and I believe middle school's looking at changing their bell schedule. I'm not sure how they've worked together, but I've asked that question. We have tutorial periods that are about thirty-five, or the thirty-five or forty minutes? Thirty-five, so thirty-five minutes. And, and from what I understand from ed code is that it's all, the tutorials are for, um, uh, not for new material, it's for remediation of material reviews and things like that. But we are, we have wonderful events that occur during tutorial, which I love, and I don't think we should change. But I am concerned that the idea of using tutorial for those events, because that's supposed to be ed minutes. So if we're not comply, if we're not just doing reviews and things like that, is this course period without educational content, would that fall under that complaint? Like a tutorial, if all the tutorials are, you know, pet the dog, I don't know. There's all kinds, I mean, they do wonderful things. So I, like I said, it's not the, it's not the activity itself, it's the fact that it's being done during ed minutes. And are we, is that, could that be, could we be opening ourselves up to litigation in that regard? From, if somebody wanted to complain?
I'm going to say I'm not sure, I need to, I'm sorry, we need to.
No, that's okay.
Look more into that.
Sure, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can just, we do audit instructional minutes every year through our process. And they review those, and it is always qualified to, under state law, as, as, under instructional minutes.
What, what is?
Tutorial or advisory.
Well, I understand, no, I know, I know tutorial is under ed minutes, that's not the question. The question is actually the activities that occur during tutorial that aren't educational, they're more mental health.
No, there we've got too many mics on.
We have lost internet again for a brief period of time. There will be a three to four minute period where there will be no video during the board meeting. So it's not being cut out on purpose, we are having internet issues. Just want to let you know if something gets cut out right now during this time, that's why.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay.
That was the question, I, again, I know tutorial is part of ed minutes. And so this complaint list talks about course periods without educational content. And so the question is, if tutorial is not, um, I mean, if it's, it's, I mean, social emotional support is some of these activities and things like that, like I said, they're great activities. But is, if we're hosting some events during tutorial that aren't, like educate, what's education based? Right, so and how, how is the use of tutorial if we're not, if it's not, um?
So, it sounds like, Chad, you mentioned there has been an assessment as to the tutorial classes and whether or not they comply with the educational curriculum requirements?
Or just the tutorial minutes?
The, thank you. The, yeah, so the tutorial minutes, because they're an extension of the classroom, so it might be like, you know, a career speaker, right? Like that could be in the class, that could be in tutorial. It could be additional review, right? That could happen in the class or do tutorial. So those, when we've had audits through, that's typically something that's audited, like those are questions that come up. It's always qualified as instructional because it's just an extension of the classroom. They're doing activities that could occur in the classroom, in this case, it's happened during this period where there's, it doesn't, it's not a typical period. But we've, in the past, it's always been approved for instructional minutes.
And Sherry, just as a point of clarification for you, I just did some quick research on what constitutes a peer, a, a course period without educational content. And it's defined as a student is released from campus before the end of the designated school day. The student is assigned to assist a certified employee in a course without being expected to complete curricular assignments, like maybe a teacher's aide. The student is not assigned to any course for that relevant period. Those are what the definitions of, of a course period without educational content. You're speaking to tutorial, like on a certain day, you're saying that maybe that activity doesn't qualify as educational content. In, in the, in the grounds of UCP, it's an entire course, like those three examples where it's not a class.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um. First reading, board policies three, five, one, five, campus security, and board policy three, five, one, five, point four, recovery of property loss or damage. Mr. Conlon?
Thank you very much. So board policy three, five, one, five is brought forward for a first reading with changes in alignment with the education code and government codes. Specifically, a section was added in alignment with Senate Bill nine oh six, which requires any employee or school official who have contact with middle or high school students who are alerted to or observe any threat or perceived threat of a homicidal act shall immediately report the threat to law enforcement. So again, it's bringing this, uh, this board policy in alignment with that, that Senate Bill nine oh six. And then, and then the second is board policy three, five, one, five, point four is brought forward for a first reading to clarify who from the district may seek reimbursement of damages. Just a minor revision.
Move that, both of these get moved to a second reading?
We're going to do board member questions first, and then speaker cards.
I didn't know, I didn't know there were questions.
Well, I don't know if there are any, but.
There are no speaker cards.
Okay, and there's, there's no public comment. Okay, now. I'll, I'll second your motion. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of moving things? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, good. Okay, first reading, board policies forty, thirty, discrimination in employment. Board policy forty, four, zero, three, three, lactation accommodation. And board policy four, one, one, nine, point, one, one, four, two, one, nine, point, one, one, four, three, one, nine, point, one, one, sexual harassment. Mr. Conlon?
Thank you, President Perry. Uh, so again, board policy four, zero, three, zero is brought forward for a first reading with changes made to align with the government code and other relevant provisions related to nondiscrimination in employment. Board policy four, zero, three, three is brought forward for a first reading to implement changes in ed code related to lactation accommodations. And board policy four, one, one, nine, point, one, one, four, two, one, nine, point, one, one, and four, three, one, nine, point, one, one, is being revised pursuant to changes to the federal Title IX regulations.
Board member questions? Are there any speaker cards?
No.
No? Okay, may I have a motion to move board policies four, zero, three, zero, four, zero, three, three, and four, one, one, nine, point, one, one, four, two, one, nine, point, one, one, four, three, one, nine, point, one, one?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, student board member?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consent calendar resolutions. This will be a roll call vote. Approval of consent calendar, items B through F. Board member questions? Does any board member wish to pull any of the resolutions to be voted on separately? Member Malcheski, are there any speaker cards?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, okay, you're still, go ahead. Okay, okay, we'll, we'll wait.
The, um, I'm a little concerned about this one. I understand this isn't related to a bond for this, for, you know, a big bond, this is a state issued bond. But I'm concerned because we have not had, I know I'm on the facilities master plan committee, but was told that it was just about the pool, but it's the facilities master plan, so it's really the whole thing. And we have not had a meeting since February. And so, or maybe March. So I'm concerned that, um, the approval date for the FMP was prior to the new, new board, the, because that was originally done, October, where is it, October twenty twenty-four? So I think we need a committee review to establish a more strategic, transparent approach to allocating school facility funds. So I'd like to pull that and, um, bring it back. I know. I'm, this item is for bond funding from the state, correct?
Would you answer that?
Sure. So this item is required so that we can apply for the matching fund from the state. So as we go through our aging of facilities, some of our facilities are eligible for modernization funds that we may have already spent. The state issued Prop two funding, ten billion dollars, about eight hundred fifty million dollars are for K-12 school district. So having this resolution will eligible us, will be, make us eligible for the matching grant from the state funding. So this is nothing related to our passing of the bond. It is just the state will allocate the matching funds from our investments in facilities.
Right, and I, and I understand that. And I guess my point is that as a new board, we have not gone through and looked at the facilities. And with the pool coming forward that has, that is going to use all of our funds, because Dr. Glass has said, if we use all of our funds for the pool, then we have two options. We can either file for a bond, or we do projects as we get more funds. And so the, the fiscal, uh, the joint, the, um, FMP committee has not met to review all of the projects to determine how they want to allocate or what priorities the projects have as a, as a whole.
That's correct.
So having that meeting would probably be good before, do we have to have that knowledge?
This is, this resolution will allow us to apply for state much, matching funds.
Okay.
So once the state matching funds come in, you as a board will make a decision as to where to invest the state matching funds.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be done beforehand?
No.
Got it, okay, thank you.
If we get the matching funds from the state.
Okay, student board member? Oh, no?
Sorry, when does the ninety day clock start? When, um, in the resolution, it says approved by the governing board, let's see, now resolved as a condition of participating in the SFP as administered by the SAB, the Laguna Beach Unified School District shall submit a, the DGS, a five-year school facility master plan or updated five-year school facilities master plan approved by the governing board of the LBUSD District for all applications submitted on or after October thirty first. Is that? Why is that, why is that the date that is selected? And if there's, somewhere I read there was like a ninety day timeframe, so when does that start?
So when the Prop two passed, it was in November of twenty twenty-four
Okay.
that the state issued, so that was the regulation that any applications that are submitted after October thirty first, twenty twenty-four will be eligible for state matching grants. So you cannot go back ten years and, for the modernization you have done, and retrospectively apply for those matching funds. So these are any projects that are done after October thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
So this is roll call, isn't it?
Logan?
Yes.
Member Morgan? Member Kelly? Member Malcheski?
Yes.
President Perry? Thank you.
Okay, consent calendar action. Approval of consent calendar, items C through Q. Does any board member have questions on any item within the consent calendar that does not require the item to be pulled to be voted on separately? Does any board member wish to pull any items within the consent calendar for discussion and to be voted on separately? Member Malcheski, are there any speaker cards for those wishing to comment on the consent calendar?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve consent calendar, items C through Q?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, any discussion, you can.
Okay, okay, on item Q, um, Chad, I think maybe you can answer this. The ratification of agreement with Coast Film Festival and FLO, is this not to exceed five thousand? Is this five thousand needed to cover a difference in what we expected it to be? Or is this just an all encompassing program cost?
This is all encompassing.
So is the five thousand enough?
Yes, yeah.
Or is there more that we could do if we funded it broader?
No, this is, is part of a, the partnership that we set up with them, and what they asked for to help facilitate the coordination back and forth.
For what we did this year, so if we want to do more next year, we need, we should consider giving, asking for more.
We may.
Or not, we're not asking, but we should approve more.
Yeah, we may. They come, we've, we discuss that typically, like, you know, as the months lead up to, like, what are the potential costs that they need for our students to, those educational programs? And then they come back, in this case, it was five thousand dollars.
Okay, great, because I would support more, I would.
Right, me too.
Logan?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item twelve, board self-reflection. Before we move on, we'll just take a few minutes to reflect on how we worked together tonight. This is not for debate or discussion, just brief reflections to help us improve our teamwork and meeting effectiveness. For ground rules, there will be no naming or responding to other trustees. Reflect on the board as a whole and your own actions. Also, please focus on the process, not personalities or decisions. Each trustee has up to thirty seconds to respond. So our prompt tonight is, what's one thing we did well as a board tonight? Thirty seconds.
Finish the agenda.
Thank you.
We got out in under six hours. Did we?
No.
Okay, I take that back. Okay, I take that back.
Logan?
We got to introduce an amazing new alternate to the board tonight.
And I'm really glad he's here. Yes. Board Member Morgan?
I thought we did a good job of asking a lot of questions on the insurance program and upholding our responsibility for oversight and accountability.
President Perry, I think Keon wanted to speak too.
Keon.
I think everyone did a great job in, you know, basically constructive criticism, you know, without debate. We cannot progress. And so I believe, you know, every comment, whether people view it as positive or negative, it contributes to progressing forward as a committee. And I think it's great. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I think we did a good job listening to each other, even if we didn't agree. So now, public comment. We can, we can have those now.
Okay. Lauren, is she still here? Okay. Leslie Elliott for Lauren. Jeb Brown. Keta. So Lauren, or Leslie, then Keta, then Michelle Foster.
Okay, so this is Lauren. First, I want to thank our board members for your service, a role important in making sure our schools function at the highest level to support children, families, employees, and the community. That said, as each of you reflect on your contributions on the board, I'd like to state that our board is not functioning as effective as it should be. I want to acknowledge Jim and Joan for the wisdom and steadiness you bring from your experience as educators, and thank you both for the patience and professionalism you have shown. Thank you also to Dee for your experience as both a teacher and a longtime board member, and especially for stepping into your new responsibilities with commitment and growth. Howard, your conduct as a board member has been deeply concerning. A position that should be based on collaboration and problem solving has instead become one of constant criticism and fault finding. Rather than helping to build solutions, you revisit past issues and make unfounded allegations against dedicated people who are working hard to serve our schools. You brought personal grievance into a role that should be focused on progress. Two examples illustrate this pattern. First, after the auditor identified legitimate issues related to the insurance matter, the constructive approach would have been to identify what went wrong and chart a plan for improvement. Instead, by the next morning, you circulated a document recasting the problem as a conspiracy theory involving a former board member and the union, an accusation entirely unsupported by evidence. Second, that ad. He placed, you placed private advertisement in Indy claiming new school board goals and referencing unprecedented community outreach and new governance transparency standards. In it, you named yourself as a spokesperson for the school board. This was misleading, as you hold no such authority, and the ad appeared designed in a way to confuse readers. In fact, Howard, your leadership approach has not reflected leadership at all. Instead, it's contributed to an atmosphere of division and avoidance. As long as you stay on the board, I have little hope of moving forward. Our community deserves a board that models cooperation, trust, and respect, qualities essential to effective governance. Governance. And I'd like to add my own. I'd like to add that I appreciated tonight's factual presentation on the insurance issue and the thoughtful ideas offered for resolving it. Even more, I'm grateful to know that when I wake up tomorrow, there won't be another baseless conspiracy theory targeting the next person on Howard's grievance list. Thank you.
A couple of you may want to broaden your scope, and instead of reflecting on your behavior at just this meeting, take stock of your entire history of meetings and see how that goes. Sheri, I am a taxpayer with no students in the district, and your use of ChatGPT to formulate questions to sound erudite is not just annoying, but pointless. All you manage to do is waste hours of everyone's time while adding nothing to the conversation. Perhaps you could take some of your time and privately ask the questions that may get you up to speed on our district operations. Howard, your conduct over these past months has been nothing short of unhinged. The constant pontificating, bullying, and hounding of your fellow board members should not be tolerated. In addition, your thirst for power is an embarrassment. Your ed code fig leaf will only go so far before you are exposed as a hubristic nobody. Going rogue with the Indy ad and your totally inappropriate emails to staff and your followers is beyond the pale. Your toxicity has no place in this district. Please resign.
Michelle Foster?
Gee, the best for last. Hi, Mr. Danforth, I want to introduce myself to you. I'm Michelle Foster, I'm the health teacher at the high school. I was worried about, you know, the superintendent, getting enough time with him, but I feel like I need to spend more time with you, since you seem to be the one making all the decisions around here, which is really frustrating as a teacher. Sorry, no offense to you, I'm just saying, everything keeps going back to him. You guys are the board, you should be running the show, and the superintendent, not a lawyer. So it's, it's hard to watch, trust me. This evening has been extremely frustrating. First of all, as a teacher, to have to wait till the end of the night to make public comments is ridiculous. I'm exhausted, I've been up since 4:00 AM. Thank you, boys, for mentioning us and representing us, we really appreciate that. But I have to get up and teach kids tomorrow, and this is not fair. So I ask you for the December meeting to move it and continue to keep teachers in the forefront, so we can perform for the students, which is what we're supposed to do. That being said, it looks like it's a Howard Hills theme night. I would do wish him well, I never, you know, wish harm on anyone. But I've been teaching at the high school for 25 years, and it's pretty rare that I speak before the board about concerns. For the majority of my tenure, our district has been strong, and I've been proud to be part of such a family, a mid-school environment, where community and colleagues genuinely care about one another. Sadly, I'm here tonight because for close to a year now, I have witnessed the exact opposite of that cohesive unity from a certain member of this board. The toxic behavior of Howard Hills has become so egregious that I can no longer stay silent. This individual has used his position not to lead, but to bully. Instead of serving our schools, students and staff, he has chosen to focus on a personal vendetta against former superintendents, previous boards, and a 20-year laundry list of people he wants to get back at. This childish behavior is wasting valuable time and energy that should be directed toward Hills's publicly insulted teachers, sent inappropriate emails to district staff, and has harassed our Labufa and CSEA union representatives to the point where it's taking a real toll on their mental health. This is not leadership, this is intimidation. The people in the district office and across our district do not deserve this treatment. Do you really think a superintendent can function properly in this hostile environment? Rather than collaborating to solve problems, Hills points fingers, blames others, and fuels division. He has demanded that lawyers look into things at an astronomical expense rather than simply collaborating with the community and staff to do his job. Hills is a problem blamer, not a problem solver. The vast majority of our district staff have made it clear they have lost confidence in Hills and believe he should be recalled or stepped down. Our students and staff deserve leaders who listen, who respect others, and who put the district's mission above their own ego. There is no place on this board for narcissism, bullying, or personal vendettas. Board Members Perry and Morgan, oh man, I plead with you to stop standing behind this man like his little minions. You are better than this. Board Member Perry, honestly, as a former teacher, I cannot fathom how you can support a board member who harasses staff and does not acknowledge the value that teachers bring to this district. Board Member Morgan, I have had your kids in my class, I've worked with you on a student inclusion campaign, you know what is important about our schools, and what needs, what we need to strive for, and his agenda is not it. Stop this craziness and let's go get the focus back to the students. Board Members Kelly and Malchewski, I would like to thank you, as would many of my colleagues if they could be here at this ridiculous hour to present something to you. And I really appreciate that you two are doing the best to keep this ship afloat, we cannot thank you two enough. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Just gonna jump on the same bandwagon here and echo the sentiments about the dysfunction that we're facing, and that it's not shared equally amongst all of the trustees. Obviously, it's overwhelmingly driven by a sustained and documented pattern of abusive behavior by trustee Hills towards staff, and now towards our new superintendent. The CPR released emails, including those improperly sent, from his personal email to conduct board business, show hostility, false accusations, and deliberate attempts to evade transparency. This pattern plays out publicly as well, including his misleading and inflammatory ad in the Laguna Beach Independent that misrepresented facts and disparaged district staff, violated board policies and bylaws. This kind of conduct has real consequences, the district is forced to have an attorney at every board meeting in order to correct member Hills' consistent incorrect reading of the law. Not, this is actually what increases legal fees, member Morgan. Most concerning is that a mere four and a half months into his job, Dr. Glass is at the receiving end of this abuse, and spends so much of his time managing disruption, responding to relentless emails, and navigating conflict. This is not what he was hired to do. He was hired to further propel this district forward with all of its resources, community support, and all of our student potential. I also want to speak directly to something that relates to a discussion I had with trustee Morgan. The one time she agreed to meet with me soon after she was elected, we discussed how once you crossed over from over here onto the dais, your job went from being a community watchdog to a public servant with the duty to further student success and to support the staff who serve them. And so I offer that reminder to all of you. You are not the watchdogs anymore, let us do that. You are public officials called upon to serve students. What we should be doing is discussing how to prepare students for future shaped by AI, automation, and global competition. Instead, meeting after meeting, we are pulled into distractions, grievances, and personal conflicts that serve no students in this district. What we are suffering is not sustainable, and if Mr. Hills's behavior continues for three more years, the real costs will be borne by our students. We'll lose teachers and staff, we'll continue to lose administrators, and we'll lose progress during one of the most consequential educational eras in modern history.
That's it, I just have non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you. So you don't have any more cards?
Just for non-agenda, public comment and non-agenda items.
Okay, okay, let's move to that now.
Okay, so we have two more comments, and public comments for non-agenda items, Michelle Foster and Shavene. You're good? And the last agenda item.
I'm back. This comment is directed to you, President Perry. Last week, I publicly commended you for working to restore structure and dignity and professionalism to these meetings, and I did mean that sincerely. Leadership deserves recognition, but leadership also requires accountability, and tonight, I need to offer you some constructive criticism. By moving general public comment to the very end of this meeting, after hours of presentations, knowing that our meetings last five-plus hours after votes and governance discussions and questions, you effectively silenced members of the public who can't stay until the end of these late-night meetings, working families, caregivers, students, and teachers. This decision undermines the spirit of the Brown Act, which protects accessible, meaningful public participation. And the community recognizes the timing of this shift. It appears to many in the public that the comment was placed at the end to shield trustee Hills from hearing directly and publicly the consequences of his most recent conduct, the ad and these emails that came out. And this is not what leadership looks like. When a public official behaves inappropriately, the community has the right to address their serious missteps, and that public official should have to face the public for which he serves. When we delay or diminish public participation, it's not that we are simply inconveniencing adults. It's more importantly, and actually heartbreakingly, that we are compromising the voice of the people who rely on us to protect them, and that is our children. These governance decisions impact the most vulnerable populations we serve, and that's the students. And every minute we spend vending processes to protect grownups from public scrutiny and accountability is a minute we take away from the work that actually improves children's lives. So President Perry, you have the capacity to lead with fairness and integrity, and I've watched you do that. And I'm urging you to restore public comment to its rightful place at the beginning of the meetings as best practice and public fairness demand, so that every family in Laguna Beach can participate without needing to rearrange their lives. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next regular meeting is December 11, 2025. The chairman, can we move in second? Thank you, all in favor?